I think our girls are really very wonderful Athens.
Okay, folks. It is seven o'clock. I'd like to call the school committee meeting to order. Before I read the agenda tonight, I would like to ask the superintendent to introduce to the public our new assistant superintendent.
Thank you. And as you can see, Debbie Spinelli, our new assistant superintendent, started work with us officially, although she did some transition work during the last couple of months. She started last Thursday, November 1st. We're thrilled. And I want to welcome Debbie, but in the spirit of good results-oriented work, we're waiting until she finishes her MCAS presentation before we give her the name plate.
Good.
So we'll see how that goes tonight. But Debbie, welcome.
Performance-based assessment.
We're all thrilled that you're here. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here.
All right. We will start off this evening with student recognitions, followed by approval of the minutes, then a conduct and responsibilities of citizens at regular meetings, followed by the visitors section, approval of overnight and late-night student travel, Foxborough High School landscaping, a discussion of the superintendent's job description and evaluation instrument, the results of the fiscal '09 budget meeting with town officials, an MCAS presentation, and we'll have a brief discussion of the joint conference, other matters, and then we will move into executive session for a discussion of collective bargaining strategies not to come back into open session. So with that as the agenda, I will ask the superintendent to kick us off with student recognition.
Thank you. The first recognition that we have tonight is one that's near and dear to me. It's from the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, and it's titled "The Award of Academic Excellence." And tonight we have Sai Khaza here, and I'd like to ask you to stand, Sai, while I read some of your accolades and attributes. And I'd also like to welcome Mr. and Mrs. Khaza tonight as well. Sai is ranked number one in the class and has a 5.41 grade point average. She took four advanced placement classes as a junior and is taking five advanced placement classes this year as a senior. Sai is interested in pursuing pre-medicine as her major and is looking at schools such as Johns Hopkins University, Harvard University, Brown University, and Yale University, to name a few. Some of Sai's strengths: she's motivated, she's a self-learner, she's respectful and listens to others, and she's very patient. She's also very hardworking and reliable, very friendly, and always seems to have a smile on her face. Sai has done 600 hours of volunteer work at Corridus Norwood Hospital and really values the time she spends visiting with patients. She also did a doctor shadow at the hospital. Sai also works at the Kumon Math and Reading Learning Center, where she is a tutor four hours a week. And just to name some of her extracurricular activities, she's been on the newspaper for four years and is now the co-editor-in-chief, book club for four years, where she's the vice president, the culture club for three years, where she's the co-president, orchestra for years, section leader, librarian, and vice president, math team for four years, and National Honor Society her senior year. She's also received a number of other awards in ninth grade in biology, geometry, orchestra, world history, English, and Spanish; in 10th grade in chemistry, algebra, US history, English, and Spanish; and in 11th grade, Algebra II, AP English, AP Spanish, orchestra, Hoshenlom Honors Science Award, and AP Scholar with Honors Award. She skipped her junior year of Spanish and went directly to AP Spanish. She also participated in People and Technology at Invences, in which they worked together in a real-life work environment to create an internal updates website for the employees to use. She's also very involved in learning classical Indian music and has performed at her temple with a singing group. Sai is very interested in getting involved in medical research and interning in a lab, but due to her age, she has not yet had that opportunity. And I'm sure that you will. I'd like to present you with this plaque, which is the Certificate of Academic Excellence.
Congratulations.
Thanks. I'm a man. I'd like you to meet that.
As parents, you must be very proud.
Our second recognition tonight is commended student in the 2008 National Merit Scholarship Program. And at this time, I'd like to ask Chris Goram to stand. And I'd also like to thank Mr. and Mrs. Goram for attending this presentation tonight. And let me just take a minute to read part of the press release. "Foxborough High School announced that Christopher J. Goram has been named a commended student in the 2008 National Merit Scholarship Program. A letter of commendation from the school and the National Merit Scholarship Corporation, which conducts the program, will be presented by the principal to this scholastically talented senior. About 34,000 commended students throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Although they will not continue in the 2008 competition for the National Merit Scholarships, commended students placed among the top 5% of more than 1.4 million students who earned the 2008 competition by taking the 2006 preliminary SAT and the National Merit Scholarship qualifying test. The young people named commended students in the 2008 National Merit Scholarship Program are distinguished by their strong academic performance in this rigorous competition," commented a spokesperson for the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. "Our nation's pursuit of educational excellence can be furthered by publicly honoring these outstanding students and by acknowledging the important role schools play in fostering their development. We hope that this recognition will contribute to their educational opportunities and encourage all students to strive to realize their potential." I had an opportunity to meet Chris last week, actually. He was one of the speakers at our seventh and eighth grade visiting night at Mr. FEO's chair. And he had an opportunity to talk a little bit about the kinds of things that he learned here at Foxborough High School, which I think were very positive and very influential. And we heard a lot of good things from families when they were leaving. So, Chris, congratulations. You did tell me, but I forgot, all of the colleges that you were applying to. You did tell me the other night, but they were some of the most prestigious. As Sai is some of the most prestigious colleges and universities in the country. So congratulations. And come up, I have a black figure.
Congratulations.
What colleges did you apply to?
Brown, WPI, Cornell, Notre Dame.
Good luck at all.
Again, as parents, you must be very proud. All right. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Wendy has handed out this evening a copy of the October 15th regular meeting notes. Any comments or corrections?
I had just on page two, the second paragraph under update on Connect Ed, where it says, "Dr. Marta stated that Metro Lake is studying the Ahern School." I know we discussed security audit. I know we discussed security plan. And I know I've been here at those discussions last time and all through the summer, but it was unclear to me as I was reading through it. So I think we should say, "Security, the Ahern, studying the Ahern, either security plan or conducting a security audit, whatever is your preference." Because it wasn't clear to me.
Security audit. It's the same the Metro Lake group is doing.
I think we should use those words.
Yeah, I agree.
The Ahern School Security.
Is conducting, instead of studying, I guess would be the verb.
Conducting?
Conducting a security audit.
Any other comments or corrections?
Under the monthly budget statement, also on page two, I believe that we should mention what the projected shortfall is. And I know we say that it's due in part to special education costs, but it's also due to the salary count offset. And I think that both those two items should be mentioned there.
What about attachment?
The budget summary is on attachment to the minutes.
Yeah, so it spells it out there.
Are there any other comments or corrections from anybody? All right. I'll take a motion. Motion by Martha, second by Kate E. Katie. Discussion? All those in favor? All right. Opposed? Kate opposes. Okay, four in favor, nine opposedes. This next item on the agenda, let me just pass this out to the committee. Paul has copies for the public. This next item on the agenda is conduct and responsibility of citizens at regular meetings. And the agenda topic was added at the request of Mr. Ballin, who after our last meeting.
Point of order, sir?
Yes, sir.
Where did Mr. Ballin ask for that to be put in the agenda?
Mr. Ballin and I had a discussion, sir.
Could you show where he asked to be put in the agenda?
Sir, let us just continue the meeting, please. All right? The agenda was added after our last meeting, when Mr. Ballin objected to the chair's request that he provide the committee and the public with copies of the five-minute statement that he was reading during the visitors' section of the meeting. After a series of email exchanges explaining the rationale for the request, and Mr. Ballin explaining his rationale for his objections, he and I were not able to reach an agreement. Therefore, I immediately notified him in writing that I would place the topic on the agenda for the meeting. Unfortunately, I received an email yesterday from Mr. Ballin that he was unable to make this meeting, but he sent a letter to be read, which I will do in a few minutes. But first, let me take five minutes to provide background for those in the audience or those watching at home as to what the issue is that we'll be discussing. The back of every meeting agenda includes a section called "Conduct and Responsibilities of Citizens at Regular Meetings" and addresses how the public may address the committee. It reads that all meetings are open to the public. Citizens may address the committee at regular meetings by (a) submitting correspondence, for example, a letter or written report to be read at the meeting, as Mr. Ballin did yesterday, submitting a request to the superintendent no later than one week prior to the meeting to be included on the agenda, or being recognized by the chairperson during the meeting. Verbal presentations by citizens are not to involve questions and answers among committee and administrative staff or general discussion, except that committee or administrative members may request clarification or rebuttal of items in the presentation with the chairman's approval. The chairperson will generally limit the time of presentations and clarification or rebuttals to five minutes each, and will ensure the speakers limit themselves to the subject matter at hand and that personalities not be involved. As part of our ongoing policy review, we discussed this specific policy at a public meeting on May 4th, 2007. The committee reinforced the right of every citizen to speak during the visitors' section of the meeting, whether it be positive or negative, but we agreed unanimously on one minor policy change, that being to require any speaker reading from a prepared statement to provide copies of that statement for the committee and the public at the time they begin reading their statement. No committee member asked that the prepared statements be submitted in advance of a meeting, and no one anticipated Mr. Ballin's concern that the chair might read ahead quickly and then shut off the visitor because he or she did not like what the visitor was going to say. In fact, people have not been silenced by any chair, even when past chairs knew Mr. Ballin or other FEO members' comments would be negative or went beyond the allowed time limit per the policy. Their right to speak has always been supported. Our rationale for this minor change was simple. First, we felt it would be easier for us and for those in the audience to follow along with the speaker if they had a copy. Second, we felt it would be easier for us to write questions or comments for follow-up directly on the copy. Third, we wanted the statement attached to the minutes so the record would reflect the person's actual statements. Mr. Ballin and the Nevados have previously stated the committee incorrectly characterized their statements in the minutes. Finally, no one on the committee believed this change would be a burden on any speaker since there is a copier available behind the meeting room. Mr. Ballin has correctly pointed out that the new policy manual has yet to be approved. Therefore, he claims this change is invalid until it is approved. However, with full committee support, I implemented this change immediately. I informed visitors multiple times of this policy change and requested copies of the prepared statements. After continued noncompliance from the Nevados and Mr. Ballin, I stated I would no longer recognize them as visitors unless they provided a copy of their prepared statements for the committee and the public. A review of the meeting tape on Foxborough Cable Access shows Mr. Ballin responding last week, quote, "I understand, I apologize, and it won't happen again," end quote. Subsequent to the last meeting, Mr. Ballin had a change of heart and has challenged the committee's request for copies of the statements when they are being read. With that background, let me read Mr. Ballin's statement. Dear Larry, At the present time, I am in Shanghai and flying to Bangladesh later on. I will not be able to attend tomorrow's meeting, but wish to have my voice heard. The current policy number 2555.2 states, quote, "Citizens may address the committee at regular meetings by (a) submitting correspondence, for example, a letter or written report to be read at the meeting," end quote. I would appreciate it if you would read this letter as it expresses my point of view on your request that we give you a copy of what we say prior to addressing the committee. A requirement does not exist in the current school policy. During our private email exchange, I respectfully submitted your consideration, I for your consideration the reasons I have for my change of heart regarding your request. One, it would set a precedent that may allow future school committees to silence people with opposing views to those in the committee. And two, it is not required according to present school policy. Unfortunately, you did not accept my point of view as valid. At this point, I have no other alternative but to respectfully disagree with your request. I wrote my thoughts prior to the meetings to make sure that I was within the time limits the chair would allow, also to make sure that my thoughts would not make my presentation confusing, extensive, and run by emotions rather than facts. Knowing that the time allowed was the chair's option, I packed as much as possible at the beginning of my presentation and added other concepts in the event the chair did not stop me. You may recall that I requested the indulgence of extended time when I felt I may need it. Much to my surprise, Mr. Spillane never asked me to stop at the five-minute mark or at any point. If I had given him a copy then, I believe that recognizing that would, that I believe that recognizing that would be said was negative to his objectives, that he would have stopped me. I must recognize that thanks to his restraint, we were able to be instrumental in many of the changes we are now experiencing. I do not wish to set precedent for the future parents that may find themselves in the identical situation we found ourselves in 2003, as barred and prevented from actively working to improve the school system. After all, the EQA report made reference to the public effort to bring the audit to Foxborough. Respectfully, Hector Ballin sent via email from Shanghai, China. With that as a background, I'll open up to the committee if anyone has any comments for discussion.
I personally think we've been very clear on the matter. And I think, Larry, you went out of your way to make that very clear to visitors on more than one occasion. And we talked about it in great length under the policy meeting that we had, and I think we were all unanimously in agreement. And whatever it takes to make this clear tonight, I think we should do so so that we can continue to move forward.
Debbie, any comments, sir?
I think that courtesy should be extended in this. And it is not easy to listen and to try to remember everything when it's being read to you at, you know, during three and five minutes period. There is no way that we can sit here and just remember. We have requested this. We voted it. And it's going to go into our new policy. And I believe we can take a vote at any time if we choose to, to establish a policy and have it ongoing. We've done it with the Wellness Committee. We've done it with safety. We've done it. Whenever we've needed a new policy, we've taken a vote on it, and it stands.
Well, the only thing is, I think, if you're going to make a policy change, in fact, I think you do have to do two readings and then accept it. So there is a protocol that will have to be followed in order to absolutely change it. But I think when you read what we have under our current policy, you know, when, I take it literally when it says submitting correspondence, a letter, a written report to be read at a meeting. Whether somebody sends something or they come with a written prepared statement, it should be given to us, if not before, then just prior to them reading it. I take exception with not having a copy of what. We've had people come and offer, I mean Chuck Drayton was a prime example. He came that night. He had extra copies of what he had to read. There wasn't anything we knew about ahead of time. And he was very gracious in sharing his copy with the audience and with each one of us. And I think it just makes it a lot easier to follow along.
Hand the press.
Absolutely.
And Andy Phillips has done that.
And it's an exact attachment. But as far as, you know, I think it's the intent and what we want and what has been done in the past. And I think literally, when you talk about conduct and responsibility and what's on the back of this, there are three ways that you can defer it. And we've been, you know, or being recognized by the chairperson. Theoretically, you know, way back in the past, no one was ever allowed to come under visitors unless they'd either contacted the superintendent or the chair ahead of time. That was only something that kind of evolved over a period of time when visitors just would like to be heard and they were recognized. But I can remember, I've been on this committee for 10 years and sat in the audience for two years prior to that. And during that, the early time, no one addressed this committee unless they'd contacted the chair or superintendent who were actually put on the agenda. They were never allowed to just pop in and say something unless they had asked for permission ahead of time. And mainly because we have an agenda. Every committee has an agenda that they'd like to stick to. And, you know, I think we as a committee, superintendent, chair, has the right to say yes or no as to whether or not they feel something's appropriate to go on the agenda and to decide if and when and where that shall be discussed. So I think, you know, there's been a lot of leeway here. And, you know, sometimes unfortunately, it takes a lot of time. And we have a full agenda of things we really want to talk about. So I think, you know, we've gotten to a point where maybe we have to rethink this a little bit.
Well, there have been several other parent support groups that come, like the one name that pops into my head right now is Andy Phillips. When he comes and speaks to us, he's come and distributed something to us and then sat down and gone over what he wants to present to us.
I don't think it's unreasonable. We've talked about this before. I think that your, what you presented tonight, Larry, is very succinct. It's very mapped out exactly where the committee is coming from. I agree with what you've written here. I think that, I don't think it's unreasonable to request that someone provide us with a copy at the time they're going to sit down. We're not, we want to encourage participation, be it positive or negative. And I think it's just, it's a courtesy. And I don't think it's unreasonable at all. I would like to see it formalized in our policy, as we've talked about. I know we have to do the readings so that there's no mistake about what we as a committee expect from citizen participation. I think that when we look at the mask guidelines, you know, for instance, they put down, no one, under number two, no one shall speak for longer than three minutes. We have five minutes. I mean, I think that we've make it possible for people to come here. If they don't have a prepared statement, they can speak. I think that it's important that you follow through on this.
Well, I think it's important for people to know that when we had our public meeting on May 4th, there were people in the audience so that we know they could have spoke up then. And because we had not approved the policy, we announced it once, and people said, okay. And then we announced it a second time. And it was finally at the last meeting, the third time, when I had to ask that. Mr. Ballin acknowledged, yes. And as I put the quote in there, I went back to the videotape and actually got his quote off the videotape. I also think it's interesting, and Hector and I went back and forth on this issue. I clearly understand his point. I clearly tried to articulate my point. We don't agree, which is why I agreed to put it on the agenda so that the committee could voice their own opinion, so that it wasn't just the chair doing something arbitrarily, and that Mr. Ballin could share directly with the committee. But he does say in his letter here, that I think is important, "Much to my surprise, Mr. Spillane never asked me to stop at the five-minute mark or at any point." It was, I don't want to speak for anyone, but quite often, the feedback that was being received in 2003, 2004, 2005 was more often negative than positive. So when Mr. Spillane was recognizing people, he more than well had to know that it was going to probably be negative. And as Mr. Ballin mentioned, he never prohibited him from speaking, and he never shut him off at the five-minute mark. So I don't think there's any evidence that the committee has ever meant to stifle anyone's speech, ever not given someone an opportunity to criticize or to compliment. And I believe this committee, in the rebroadcast of its meeting and in putting them on the website, we are clearly inviting the public to join us. All we're simply asking is when they have a prepared statement, as the Nevados and Mr. Ballin often do, and they sometimes go for three, four, five, last time, Mr. Ballin went for over five minutes, and I did not shut him off. But if you look at the tape, you'll see he went for over five minutes. We've always given them the opportunity to criticize and to compliment, and therefore, it does not seem unreasonable for me either. But we've discussed it at the public meeting on May 4th. We've discussed it three times at least since then. But I thought it was important, since Mr. Ballin did not agree, to give him the option at this public session. And unfortunately, it wasn't until yesterday that I got the email from him saying that he was going to be on the calendar. So, does anybody in the audience have any comments or would like to share anything on the subject? Please come up to the table and...
Can I just say one other thing?
Go ahead, Martha.
When you look at the district school committee guidelines for public comment, one of the things they talk about, "Any citizen who wishes to make a presentation to the school committee on an item which of his interest to him or her and within the scope of the committee's responsibilities, may request to be placed on the agenda for a particular meeting. Such requests should be in writing and should be received by the superintendent of schools at least one week prior to the date of meeting. Such requests should contain background statements which would explain the scope and intent of the agenda item. The chair of the committee works with the superintendent to formulate the meeting agendas. Together, they will determine whether or not to place an item on the agenda. And if the item is to be taken up, they will also determine when to place an item on the agenda, and all parameters will be required by the presenter. It also, under three, talks about the chair may rule out of order on any individual who fails to honor the guidelines or addresses a matter inappropriate to public comment." They also talk about if a group of citizens appearing at a meeting to express favor or opposition to a particular agenda item should designate one member to group, to speak for the group. So, you know, they, these are the people that help us to write our policies and to try to give us a direction as to how to hold our meetings and what to do. And I think when we go back to the policy committee, then certainly if we want to change anything or redirect anything at that point, then...
Well, I guess the example you're making is last week, we had two members of FEO making statements. We allowed both of them to speak. There's never been an effort on the part of this committee or the past committees to stifle anyone. Mrs. Navarro, you'd like to speak? Would you come up to the microphone, please?
Thank you. Deb Talavera from Spring Street. I just want to say that whatever policy that you choose to implement is not going to necessarily affect only us. It's going to affect every person that follows us. And this really should not be something personal between us and you. It's something that's going to affect everyone that follows. And so anyone else who wants to come to speak to the school committee, that wants to take time to collect their thoughts on a piece of paper, might be then asked to... time to collect their thoughts on a piece of paper, might be then asked to present that to the school committee. As long as the school committee is very clear about what they want, then that's fine. I do want to make clear that this was not a policy issue until now, meaning the old policy was in effect. Thank you. I do have one more comment that I'd like to make in Visitors section.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any, any other comments on this, on this topic?
I'm Debra Navarro, Lady Force, Spruce. I don't know how we got here, but it is unfortunate. It is unfortunate because the chair has misrepresented several things tonight. While appearing to read the, the statement, he said that Mr. Ballon asked for a meeting. I don't have knowledge of that and I would like to see that. As I listened to the different school committee members, I realized that they know it is not a policy. The way we implemented the wellness policy, the way we implemented, excuse me, the way the committee implemented the acceptable use policy and the way it has been done in this community. In other communities, they have three readings. In some others, one reading. But in this community, the practice and custom has been to do a first reading and a second reading. At the last meeting, the chair said, "And if, if your indulgence, I would like to be able to show the video to the public."
I don't think we need that, sir. You can state what you said I said. No one's going to question your veracity and anybody can check the tape. Let's try to keep to the topic at hand and keep to the agenda.
Those were your words, sir. And you, you accused us, you accused either my wife or Mr. Ballon or both of violating a policy. We have made here a very significant and forceful case against former chair for violating or enforcing policies willingly at his whim. And now you want to tell us that because you mentioned it at one, at one, at the revision, a policy revision meeting, and you've mentioned it several times again, it is a defacto policy? I, that is not the way...
I don't think that's what we're saying either.
In, in that case, then there's no policy and he owes my wife or Mr. Ballon or both an apology for a false accusation.
I don't think anybody's accusing anybody of anything.
That is what he said. And people need to be responsible for what they say.
The school committee clearly discussed on May 4th, and the committee unanimously agreed to move forward and ask people to provide a copy.
Sir, so was the vote.
Sir.
We didn't need a vote.
We didn't need a vote. You can disagree, please feel free to disagree.
You have, you have come up with a new way, or you've established it as a policy.
No.
And the new process of a policy requires the public to know. The comments of three school committee members today show that it was a clear deviation from the custom in this community. We have criticized that before, we'll criticize that again.
And that is fine, sir.
The other thing that I find here that is astonishing is that when, I appreciate Ms. Lattary's position, but I don't think you have the moral authority to criticize that. Because we, we have given you copies at times and you're recognizing that that is a matter of courtesy. But we have requested from this committee, this school system, documents that we are by law entitled to, that you have an obligation to, that we asked for them in February.
Sir, you're off topic.
You're off, you're off.
You're off topic.
Anything that is inconvenient to your practices?
No, sir. That is not correct. The topic is citizens, responsibility of citizens at regular meetings. It is not about something that happened a long time ago when you requested information. If you ever, if you want to talk about what we're talking about this evening, feel free. But you're not going to stray to other matters, not on this topic, sir. Do you have anything else to say, sir?
You're disappointed.
No. Thank you very much. So the committee, does the committee have anything else to add to this topic?
No, just a question. What is the best way for us to move forward? We've, we've talked about this four times.
That's correct.
We've asked for something. We, we had a clear consensus and what we all agreed to. We didn't rewrite the policy because that is in fact...
In process.
In process. But we had a unanimous decision here. So I do like the fact that, would you like to have a vote or a consensus again?
I think what we need to do is wait and bring it up again when we have the, the next policy meeting, when we go over the book and what's there. And if we want to make any adjustments before we do our first reading, then I think that's when it's appropriate to put it in. I don't, I don't think, because you can't, even if we took a consensus tonight or even if, we can't vote on it because we haven't had two readings. So I think what we need to do is collect your thoughts, make sure you have them in order for when we sit and go over all the policies. Because we're going to get the book and we're going to go through it. And then if we want to change anything, that, that we want to change, then that will be included in the first and then the second reading.
Absolutely, and I agree with that, Martha. Perhaps it wasn't clear though, for moving forward tonight, do you need a consensus that this is our position we're taking? We're waiting for the policy, but it is clearly our intention to ask for written statements in advance. And that if those are not received, then a support of the chair not to recognize those individuals. Because that's our practice.
Right, but that, we'll need to, I, I don't think you can do anything on it tonight. We can have our thoughts.
Clarifying.
Just clarifying.
I just want to clarify so that it's reflected here clearly and then also in the minutes.
Keeping in mind, Kate, what I said here is this agenda topic was added for Mr. Ballen, who after our last meeting objected to the chair's request and to provide the committee and the public with copies. When he and I went back and forth, and he shared his viewpoint and I shared mine, and he said, "I expect he disagrees," I said, "Then I will bring it to the committee, I will put it on the agenda so that you're not dealing just with me, you're dealing with the committee." The committee had made it clear, both at May 4th and at three separate occasions, that we wanted to ask, that we were asking people to provide copies. And the first time I let it go, the second time I let it go, the third time, after saying to the same people and after Mr. Ballen apologizing and saying, as he did, "I understand, I apologize, it won't happen again, I was trying to enforce what the school committee said for one." But because Mr. Ballen objected to that, I wanted to give him the right for the entire committee to decide whether they wanted to continue that practice or whether they wanted to suspend it until the policy is reviewed or do something in between. And that was the purpose and the only purpose. I think it is clear to me that the committee wants to go forward with that policy. The question becomes, do we, do we wait until whatever time that the policies come back for the review and approval? And in the meantime, suspend the request for the written statements? Or do we want to continue to request the written statements? That's what I'd like the committee to decide tonight.
Thank you for clarifying that.
We don't have the ti, I hate to ask this, but we don't have the timeframe for when we're going to get those policies.
That's correct.
So that's, we, we can agree to have a practice of what we're going to accept from our citizen input. It's not in our policy as yet.
Well, actually it is in the policy because it talks about citizens may address the committee at regular meetings by submitting correspondence of a letter or a written report to be read at the meeting. Now whether the person reads it themselves or has us read it, it says it should be submitted.
Well, I think the third one is it's being rec, or being recognized by the chairperson. So the, so in fact, there's, there's the opportunity for someone to come forward without submitting the paper and being recognized.
That's correct. And I would agree with you, Kate.
So I think that...
If someone chooses not to submit something in writing or not to request an agenda topic, they can, under visitors, as I interpret the policy, raise their hand and be recognized by the chair. What the, what the committee has asked through the chair is that those folks that wish to do that, especially those that are making five-minute speeches, that we have a copy of what they're reading so we can follow along. That's all. It's not anything, in my view, is not anything terrible, it's not anything secretive, it's not anything demeaning. It's simply, when someone's speaking for five minutes, it is difficult to follow everything they're saying without having it in front of us. The committee was simply asking for that practice, period.
And I think, Larry, the fact that you really spelled out, we're not asking for that copy 15 minutes before those people, you know, whatever individual comes forward. We're asking at that time. So the concern about that individual not having or being stifled in some way, I think as a committee, we're very cognizant of that and wouldn't want that to happen. But...
And again, you know, I recognize that in any given meeting, we all speak extemporaneously. You didn't hear me criticize Mr. Ballen. How could he possibly think that Mr. Spillane, had he known in advance what he was going to say, would have stopped him? That's the same kind of a conjecture. I didn't criticize that, that was his opinion, all right? When I used the word "policy," all right, maybe the word was "practice." But you know, if you want to argue about it, the point was clear. We discussed it on at least four occasions and none of the three people that are protesting it raised a question any one of those other occasions. And even at the last meeting, when they agreed, it was only after the meeting that Mr. Ballen said he had a change of heart and had changed, changed his opinion. And out of respect for Mr. Ballen and the work he's done for the community, I said, "Well, we'll put it on the agenda so the entire committee can discuss it." There's no attempt here to hurt anyone's feelings, there's no attempt to ramrod anything, there's no intent to not allow someone to speak. I think it's, it's a big deal about nothing. Yes, sir, I'll allow you one more comment.
Thank you, sir. Two things. During the exchange with Mr. Ballon, you quoted the policy. That was 25, 5.2.
No, he did.
Yes, in the emails that...
Yes, I did.
Yes.
I sent, I copied him after this policy.
However, to your point of view, that policy had been abrogated for the new one. Why didn't you quote that one?
Sir, that you're incorrect. Your assumption is incorrect.
Fine, and that's why it's a question.
Right.
The second thing is, when you went to the EQA, you went with a prepared statement.
Sir, the EQA is not what we're talking about this evening.
But we're talking about, about how written statements should be shared. And, and she, and Ms. Lattary brought other places where that happened. So I think I should be allowed to bring a reflection from another place. And this one more pertinent because it actually reflects on the chair, who made changes to those statements as he was waiting to present to the EQA and who did not volunteer a copy to the EQA.
Sir, were you there at the meeting, sir? You're on, you're on line.
We would like for you to have consistency and show integrity to your thought process. That's all, sir.
Fine, thank you very much, sir.
Larry, you had asked a question of what our preference was.
Yes, ma'am.
My preference is that we stay with the policy. We continue to ask for it in writing and I, you have my support for if an individual does not do that, then they will not be recognized. Because you asked me which...
Right, yes, thank you very much. How does anyone else feel?
I feel the same.
You feel the same?
I feel the same, Lisa.
Okay, fine, thank you. I appreciate that. Let me go back to the agenda. The next item on the agenda is visitors. Are there any visitors that would like to make a statement this evening? Yes, Mrs. Navarro?
Thank you. And I really have no desire in bogging down this meeting because we need to move forward to some important topics at hand. Now, if I bring notes that look like this, are you going to ask for them as well?
If you take 30 seconds or less, it's probably not a problem. But if you have five minutes worth of speeches, yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. My question was about the minutes that were just approved by the school committee. I noticed that at the end of the school committee minutes, it says from, this is from the October 15 minutes, it says specifically here under attachments, it says "Statements from D. Navarro and H. Ballon." I never agreed to have my notes attached to the minutes. It was not my understanding that that was a policy that was going to be enforced. I had a verbal agreement with the chairman as well as with Ms. Wendy Wills that I did not want these attached, and they both said, "Yes, I understand."
That is incorrect. You asked if you could give, not the copy you had with you, but the, the email that you sent out to all of your FEO list. And that's what I said could be attached.
Then not having any of the attachments available this evening to know what exactly was attached, I did not know that. So you're telling me, you're representing to me this evening that what was attached was the email, not my courtesy copy of my notes?
I'm representing to you that what I agreed to you was that Wendy would attach a copy of the email, not the notes that you had in front of you because you asked for that.
Very good. I could not tell which one it was, just based on what was given to us this evening. All right. And in terms of the material facts of what was presented this evening, I do have some issues with what was said. I'd like opportunity to address that with the committee at some point. Then I'll approach the chair to discuss it.
That'll be fine, thank you very much. We now have, okay, sir.
Good evening. You probably know me by now, so I'll be frank on that. But just for, just for accuracy, Mr. Ballon spoke for six minutes and 13 seconds, Debbie spoke for four minutes and 23 seconds. I spoke for a minute and 30 seconds, and Mr. Harrington spoke for two minutes and 38 seconds. So of the time, take us down. Give us that time.
Excuse me, what time, sir?
Those are the times that people spoke during the last meeting. As, I, I would like to highlight that when we tried to bring here the data, the evidence, the information for accuracy, the chair opposed that. And number three, the policy, you said that when you said "policy," perhaps you meant to say "practice."
Sir, we're already off that topic.
Sir, this is visitors...
Sir, I have the right to recognize you or not. We already had that topic. You had plenty of time to talk during the topic. If you have something other than that topic you'd like to discuss, feel free.
Yes, sir, I think that's important. I'm sorry, when, if you, if it's one word versus the other, how do we know that when you say red is not blue or green or orange? How can we take a word at face value?
Thank you very much, sir. We're out of order. All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of overnight and late-night student travel. The principal from the high school, please join us.
Good evening. This evening I'm just asking for school committee approval for 11 anticipated overnight trips in, during the '07-'08 school year. 10 of these trips have been regular occurrences during the last, excuse me, three or four school years. Just for community purposes, I just want to go through the list real quickly and then certainly open up any questions the committee has. The first is varsity wrestling team going to a preseason wrestling match out in Lowell. My understanding is over 50 schools that are there. And due to the nature of when kids wrestle, it would be probably in the best interest of the students to stay overnight. The student council has a lock-in this year in Marshfield. It's a regional student council lock-in. It's for leadership purposes, team-building purposes. It's a, it's a regular occurrence on the student council, the central, not the central, but the regional student council. The cheerleaders will once again be attending the national competition in Orlando, Florida. The French exchange will be going to Paris, France. We just recently hosted a chiming group of, I think about 12 or 13, 13 students, and I think they enjoyed their stay here. Spanish trip will be going to Valencia due to some school construction. Usually they've visited us, but this year they'll be coming the following year as opposed to in the fall as they normally do. Once again, if we qualify, the varsity wrestling team will be staying over during the February or just after February vacation. We have the annual state student council convention down in Hyannis, the All-State Music Festival at Park Plaza in Boston, the Festival of Music last year was in Montreal. This year, I understand, is in New York City. And then the final is the Duke Ellington Festival if we qualify, which is near the end of the year in May. The only new overnight trip is a New York City tour sponsored by the Social Studies Department. Mr. Ferber, who's the history club advisor, in conjunction with... in conjunction with some of the social studies history aspects, is requesting a trip to New York City. Coal pit travel is the broker, if you will. It's from May first to the third. I think it's an educationally sound trip where they would view things like the Museum of Natural History, Museum of Fine Arts, Statue of Liberty, Ellis Island, Ground Zero. So I think based on the concepts they've learned in their four years, he's trying to get that particular trip up and running. I believe there's five students who've signed up now. My anticipation is probably about fifteen or twenty students with the appropriate chaperones. So that's the new trip in the group. And like I said, the other ten have been regular occurrences through the years. So with that, I open it up to any questions of the committee.
Questions in the committee?
Just could you confirm, Jack? Because I can't, I know our ratio is one in six on the one chaperone to every six. Is that pretty much the ratio that we still are maintaining?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Great job. Thank you for refreshing my memory.
Sure. Katie, any comments?
No, I'd just like to know a little bit more, I guess, about the New York City tour. You're going through travel agent, where they're going to be staying. Have the group ever been...
Yeah, I thought you were provided with the information. If you weren't, I can certainly give you copies of the itinerary.
Next, thank you.
No, okay, I'll get that too. But anyway, it's a three-day tour, Thursday, Friday, and then returning home late on Saturday. It's pretty structured. There's very, in fact, I don't even think there's any free time for the students. There's pretty well chaperone throughout, right from when they depart Foxborough at seven AM on Thursday. And if you want, I can walk you through the itinerary, whatever.
Yeah, that's okay. They may come to copy.
You sure?
Yes, fine.
Anything else, Katie? Martha?
No, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Do I have a motion from the committee?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Katie, second by Martha, to approve that the list is submitted. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five-zero. Thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the, Mr. O'Leary's going to talk about Foxborough High School landscaping. Welcome, Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, thank you. As you notice, that in thirty-five years, the grounds has deteriorated somewhat in the surrounding of the school. This year, we went before CIP at the town to replace all the curbing. We did have the granite available from the center of town, which was approved. So we replaced all the granite, the pre-cast curbing with granite, put the finish coat on there, and the entrance looks...
Outstanding.
Presentable.
It really looks wonderful.
It does.
You did a very nice job.
The good news is that the project came in under budget, so there are still funds available. So we were looking at other areas to enhance the aesthetics of the grounds here. Also, we're looking to the future. We're going to need a new roof on this building in a few years. We have a tremendous number of trees that are infringing onto the roof, creating a problem. Pine needles, leaves, plug drains. We have the roof ponding. We're constantly up there cleaning them and so on. In preparation of a new roof, we asked Andy Felix, who's the tree warden for the town, to come up and evaluate the trees around the building. And he did agree that they do create a hazard, and he marked the ones that should be removed. The other problem is the trees and the roots are now above ground. Prevents any grass or landscaping around the building. So we've marked the trees out. Starting Phase One would be near the gym entrance, to the right and to the left, all the way down to the back of the gym doors. We selected a few trees to keep. Believe me, I'm a tree lover. I don't like taking down any trees, but these will create a problem. So we're going to remove those trees, which will be done by the highway department during the winter as time is available to them. So the tree removal around the building should be done at virtually little or no cost to the school committee. Again, the town would remove them. The other issue with the trees is the courtyard inside the middle of the building. I'm sure when the architects laid this building out, there were some beautiful trees in there. You could look out, and they were wonderful. Well, now the trees are good seventy, eighty, ninety feet tall. When you look out the windows, all you see are trunks, nothing else. If you go up on the roof, they are beautiful trees. The only one who sees them is myself and the guys who go up and work on the roof. And again, those trees create a problem with my roof and the drains. So those trees have to come out before the roof is replaced in this building. The problem being, they're going to have to be lifted out with a crane. So we had some rough figures from Andy Felix, you know, using his experience. He said it would probably be in the eight, nine to ten thousand dollar range to rent a crane for a few days to lift them out of the courtyard. And if you look at the courtyard, it's always a mess with the pine needles, the leaves, and so on. We're constantly trying to pull them. And to clean the courtyard, we have to fill barrels and drag them through the building and out the back. So, that would be another phase to remove those. Again, those don't have to be done this year, but they should definitely be done before the roof is replaced. The other problem area is parking. We obviously don't have enough parking spaces, especially late in the school year when I think sophomores and juniors all of a sudden get their license. Come April or May, we have more student cars here. So we end up parking on lawns and so on. In front of the tennis courts, there was, used to be a grass area. Actually, it wasn't grass, it was weeds, but it was loom. And every time it rained, cars would park in there, would have tremendous ruts and so on. We dug that out. Highway department come up at no cost to us and dug it out and put gravel so at least we can park there without creating ruts. The money left over from the curbing project is, I would like to put granite curbing in that area about five feet out from the tennis court fence and create a viewing platform for the tennis court and the tennis team. That'll create a platform, handicapped accessible, to view the tennis court matches. Then the granite curbing from there down, we will pave. We can pick up at least a dozen parking spaces there. Also, I want to put granite curbing from the back driveway to the gymnasium up to the new handicap ramp. And you'll see that on the plan I gave you for two reasons. Number one, people are parking there. They pull up onto the dirt and park. People would park in the gymnasium if I could get the doors open. I don't know why. We have plenty of parking spaces in the evening. But every time you come up, they're parked on the dirt, on the grass. So if we remove those trees, loom it and seed it, we'd have to have some type of barrier. So the granite curbing would create that barrier there. That, the money for that curbing and for the viewing platform and the granite curbing from the tennis court would be paid for with the money left over from CIP. The additional paving for the parking spaces and so on would be about nineteen thousand dollars. We would like to do that with whatever funds are available. And I believe Mr. Jackson stated that, you know, your building rental account or some other such account could be used. The paving does not absolutely have to be done this year. We do have the money to do the curbing and the viewing platform. The paving could be done at a later date. But while the contractor is here with his equipment, it would be much cheaper to do it at this time. So we've marked the trees out there. I have them all marked, the ones that Andy Felix would like us to take down. You'll see the pictures over there. Mr. Roy went out, Jerry Roy, and took some great pictures for us showing the trees and the areas that we'd like to clean up. Any questions?
Mike, I have one question.
Sure.
When you look at the parking lot that's out here and you walk along to get to the front of the school, we have all those trees, the stumps, the roots are all above ground. It is, as that safety hazard, people falling, people tripping. It is very ugly. Are you proposing doing anything to address that area?
That's the area in question right now.
No, I'm referring to...
Oh, and this, the middle lot.
Yeah, the middle lot.
The middle.
The middle lot.
Yeah, um, that would be the Phase Two or Three. The ones, I have to get rid of first, are the ones closest to the building.
Right, right.
Those are the areas. So we're going to start Phase One right along there, the ones that are closest. Then we'll come out and do the rest of the building. And the rear is not a problem. The trees are far enough away. When we had Andy Felix here, he did look at that area and said we could or would have to thin out some of the trees. But he's an advocate of keeping as many as possible because it is a rustic setting. So right now, the middle area is not as big a concern for me as it is surrounding the building.
My concern wasn't the removal of the trees, but...
Would be to loom.
It either loom or mulch or something. Because it's a safety hazard. People walking or people running from their car is very easy. I've seen many people trip and fall. And I wouldn't want to see someone get hurt. So I was just wondering, is there an inexpensive way to address at least all the roots that are above ground that trip people?
We could fill it in with a clay-type material. Mulch wouldn't be a good alternative because the highway department comes in and cleans leaves using the blowers. If we had mulch there, they'd end up taking that with them every time. So it would have to be some type of fill that we could fill in that area. Obviously, you're not going to get grass to grow because of the shade. But we could fill that area.
If you just give it some thought, because I think it is a safety, and I don't want to see someone get hurt.
What's the lighting situation out there? Is it, is that, because it seems like the last time I was out there in the dark, it wasn't light on that sidewalk bringing you not through that area that you're describing, Larry? So I'm wondering if something as simple as...
We don't, there is no lighting in the middle. The two perimeter parking lots and the concrete water are all lit. There is none in that middle parking lot.
I think that's sort of the problem, yeah.
So maybe if you'd give it some thought, go back to us for that. Martha?
I have a question as far as the tennis courts. I know we talked about it as far as, you know, having to address the tennis courts. If you do that work out there, if and when we have to do the tennis courts, we're not going to compromise that project, are we?
No, no. It'll be far enough back. And the tennis courts would be replaced in place.
Okay.
So they wouldn't be relocated, no.
How much money would, I'm sorry, Kate, how much money would we be saving? You said that we already have the equipment here. You said we didn't...
Oh, to pay, probably just a few thousand dollars. You know, it's just, it would be nice to finish it off while we're here. If it isn't finished, it isn't finished. I, we will continue. I would like to do the work, the granite curbing and the platform and so on with the money we have existing in the CIP, where we did come in under budget.
And just to add a thought to that, I think it's our intention to bring to the committee Phase Two of the parking lot and the curbing here at the high school so that certainly if we need to that paving now, that would be part of Phase Two, which would be a capital request.
Yes, when we go before the town, when they request it, our capital, we'll go before the capital committee, capital improvement plan. We want to finish the granite curbing along the front of the building here. And that would require newer curbing rather than what came from the center of town. Because of the contour, we couldn't use the existing curbing.
Of course.
So when we go before CIP, one of my requests will be to finish the curbing in front of the building. We've gone up to the building. Now we'd like to finish it. Whether the town has money available or not, we'll have to see. That'll be one of our requests.
Well, any other comments?
Yeah, just a question. On the tennis courts, Mike, you think you can get fifty to twenty parking spots?
No, a dozen.
A dozen?
Yep.
Now, the paving to the side, it's very uneven in that parking lot. It's really broken up there. But that would have to wait, would that be included? Or would that have to wait to stay...
That'd be another, that'd be when we start replacing the parking lots.
Okay, so that's Phase Two. It's not Phase Three.
That'd be Phase Three or Four.
Uh-oh, okay.
Yeah.
I hear the trees, but it's very, it's very broken up there. It's...
You know, can we do some patching? Yeah, we could do some patching. Hopefully, Highway can help us out a little bit on that. But I think the next phase, what we should do is finish curbing in front of the building and then pave this area in front of the building. And then look at our parking lot replacement next. You know, there's just so much money available, unfortunately. And we're looking at roofs here, paving a tailor. So we kind of have to be judicial in what we can do. But will we take some of the worst areas if they're unsafe or conditioned? Yeah, we'd ask Highway to dig it up.
Now, I think patching would probably work there. I think that's an excuse they use to park on the grass because they know it's all broken up.
Exactly. You know, Highway Department's been very, very good to us and supplies with a lot of labor. The worst-case scenarios, we'd have to pay for the paving on the hot top and their supply of labor. Highway's been excellent with us, so...
The only other question I had, so all of the trees close to the building will all go?
No, there's a few that we selectively kept that are far enough out. If you look, if you get a chance tomorrow, the ones are here. I've got them marked now. You'll see, you know, Andy Felix selected some of the best ones. He said, "We'll do some trimming where they overhang." But if you notice in that area, we kept three or four nice trees and actually one here near this doorway here that we kept. And he said, "I can trim it back where it wouldn't be a problem." Now, we don't want to remove them all. We just want to remove the ones, especially the pines that are a problem.
We want to conserve. It'd be great to go green, but we can't really go green whenever we renovate because you can't grow anything because of the trees.
Exactly. So we would like to irrigate that area and seed it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a tree hugger myself, but some of those really need to come down to make way for...
Especially with the roots now above ground. No, we wanted to keep as many as possible, so...
I think they get to a point, too, with the roots coming up, that you compromise whether or not, you know, hurricane's going to take them down in the wrong direction so we don't need them leaning on the building. So it's better to take them down.
I would rather take them down.
The roots are up there. They're vulnerable.
You get a bad storm and, you know, whether the old roof or the new roof where it crashes into the building.
So Mike, would you like us to take this in three sections? Do you want approval to take down the trees?
Yes.
Do you want approval to use the remaining money to do the work in front of the tennis courts? And then you'd like the committee to consider whether it would spend the extra nineteen thousand to finish off the project?
Correct.
Alright, so I'd like to take them one at a time, to committee's pleasure.
Take the first one first. You got it, Wendy?
No.
The first one is the taking down of the trees that are marked already paved.
Okay, I'll make a motion to that.
Motion by Martha, second by Kate. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, five-zero. Second one is to use the excess funds from the original project last summer to finish the work that Mike described in front of the tennis court. Motion by Devlin, second by Martha. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Opposed, motion carries, five zero. Now, the third is the additional, approximate, I think you said nineteen thousand, to finish off the entire project, including the additional paving that you need to do back around there.
I'd like to vote for it.
And what is your motion?
That we take it out of the building rental.
Motion by Martha, is there a second?
Should we look at the revolving accounts first, maybe? Would you have a better suggestion?
No, but I, but the building, projection, projected balance for the building rental account as of June thirty oh eight stands now at two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars.
So, the nine thousand would take you down to two hundred.
I'll second that, Ben.
There's a second, any further discussion? Katie?
So, your recommendation would-
It would be all right.
Yes.
So, I'm gonna get that on record?
All right. There's a motion, there's a second, to approve the nineteen thousand dollars to finish that phase of the project. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries, five zero. Mike, before you go, I have a question for you.
Sure.
We have talked a number of times about the area outside the superintendent's office, and whether or not when one of them back down, they're gonna back into-
Hopefully, it will be done. That's part of the CIP money that I had left over. That money is there, he's waiting. Actually, I called him today, he may do it November twelfth while school's closed.
Okay.
He has the curving, he picked it up. It's a special cut of curving, it's very high. So, I talked to Charlie Capone today, he said he picked it up, it's down at his yard. I told him we are closed on the twelfth, it'd be a good day to come in, so he's gonna try to get that on the schedule. Once he starts that, see, once he moves his crew, he's gonna start that. We're waiting for the approval tonight, he'll bring his crew immediately up here and start this. So, where this has been approved, there's a good chance he'll probably start on November twelfth. So, yes, that, I told him how to be done by Thanksgiving, before the first snowstorm.
Far from that sinkhole.
So, the next, you know, at the end of the year, the trees in the courtyard obviously don't have to be done this year. I think we look at where we stand at the end of the year, if there's funds available. If not, I think we have to look at them next year, put them in the budget somewhere. Again, it's not critically removed now, they just have to be removed before we decide to put a roof on the building.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the superintendent job description and evaluation instrument. Katie, you've done a lot of work in this area with the superintendent, so I'll turn this piece, the meeting, over to you.
Well, included in your packets, you saw the job, superintendent's schools administrative job description, and you wanted to bring that to the committee tonight. If there's any additions or changes you wanna make. If you note, we've added under educational leadership, A, we've added number seven under business and finance, following the principles of effective administrative leadership, which was included in one of your previous packets. And then, we also included, C, the evaluation piece, that performance of this position will be evaluated annually, in accordance with the provisions of the committee's policy evaluation of the superintendent. So, I think I'd like to start with this and see if there's any input or changes or-
Do you want to hear from Chris first, or from the other committee?
I'm sorry.
Actually, Katie and I worked on this, and kinda shared graphs back and forth, and some, you know, some language, and I think it, I think it fits very well with our discussion, so I'm fine with it.
Okay. Questions from the committee? Martha?
Now, is this, is this a policy that goes into our policy books?
Well, we're gonna have to, that's a good question. Yeah, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to go back to the policy.
Right.
We'll have to communicate, as long as we get some consensus tonight, I think we communicate that with Jim Hardy at MASC, and then, and then we move it through the whole reading process.
Beverly?
Good job.
That's why it's correct.
Yeah.
Katie?
Very clear.
Great job. Believe it or not, I have no words to add. I would just like, though, for consistency, the category should map the job description to the evaluation, and the same language that we use in the goals. And it's very minor, for instance, on one, we say relationship with school committee, then we say relations. We say community and government relations, then we call it general management.
Where are you?
I'm all over the place, Martha.
You are.
It's the headers, it is, the headers are different. The words are all complete, Katie and Dr. Martis, you did a great job. It's just getting consistency and clarity around the titles.
So, you wanna walk us through, Kate, do you wanna walk us through, then, which ones that you, do you want?
I can, whatever's easier.
Maybe rather than going through that.
Okay. There's seven items, so it's-
Just convey it to them, and bring it to the policy committee.
If there's a consensus that the concept and the principles are there, some minor tweaking, let's do the tweaking, and then bring it to the policy.
Right. That's not, don't worry about it. Just give it to them, they'll give it to Jim Hardy, and they'll-
So, does anybody have any heartburn, or any major issues with the document?
Are we doing one or two?
We're doing the first of the job description, other than the tweaking that you suggested, Kate. We can do that. Now, let's move to the superintendent evaluation tool, for Katie.
As hopefully everyone's had a chance to read through this, and again, we wanted to bring it to the committee. We, Dr. Martis and I talked about the scale that we wanted to use to evaluate him and any superintendent, and obviously, we thought five was a good number to do, and we thought eight or nine was giving too many, too many options, and it might create more fuzziness about how people wanted to rate him. And so, we thought the five were pretty concise. There's descriptions and definitions of those numbers that I think are pretty clear. We can discuss them, though, in more detail, if members of the committee would like to do that. If you wanna just take note, each of those responsibilities really covers a lot of the administrative job description that we just approved, of own consensus.
Agreed to the consensus.
And, wanna be careful with my wordings here, the last page of the evaluation tool has the two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight goals listed, just the general headings that then each committee member can provide a paragraph of description of how they felt Dr. Martis did on those particular goals. And then, as been done in the past, and is part of our policy, the chair then will take each of the committee's members' description of this final page, and build a general consensus of the majority of the school committee members, and how they view Dr. Martis's performance on these goals.
And as we indicated when we negotiated with Dr. Martis, the intent is to do this publicly?
Yes.
Share it publicly. He is more than willing for the community to hear his strengths in areas for opportunity. And so, we were refreshed at that time, I just wanna remind people that this is a very open and public discussion when we get to his evaluation, and he's always had that, and we want, insisted on having it here in Foxborough as well.
You know, having gone to MASC and sat in on one of these panels that they had or discussions, this is exactly what they were talking about, and what I personally hope for, is a tool for each of us to use, because it's very hard to just sit down and write a story about something or about someone. And I like the fact that there is a tool, there's a number setting to it, and then we pass it along to the chairman, who will write a composite, give it back to us, we'll come up with a consensus, and then present it. I love your concept. Good job.
Excellent job. Katie? Katie, sorry.
Again, excellent. My only suggestion would be on the goals, rather than a narrative, compared to five people. And I think MASC, the ones I've seen, 'cause this is the very, this is their template, which makes sense, but didn't they use also a grid, a rating scale, one to five, on the actual goal completion?
Yeah, I have to go look in.
I'd have to look in your book, too.
I might suggest just, I would use the same rating system, because under each section, you ask for comments, and then you can under goals, so-
So, you're saying omit a narrative under each of the goals, and just use-
Still provide the option.
As an option.
Right.
I mean, did he need his goals?
Every section does ask for comments, examples, okay? So, you could have comments and examples, but it would be, I think, easier to complete if you had a grid.
Okay.
And then comments.
We'll have fun.
Okay.
Did you wanna add anything, Dr. Martis, that-
No, well, just to pick up on what you said, we did, and I think, having gone through this a couple of other times, there's always a question about the numbering system, and we did look at one through nine scales.
Right.
This one through five scale.
One through three.
We looked at one that said net, not net.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's pretty good.
A and B.
So, I think, I think we're all comfortable with a five-point scale, because there is some gradation between it, and just to pick up on what Larry just said, you know, I'm always, I've always been very open to this, what you will be hearing with the leadership team, really, is, is the work that we're doing along in this area periodically, as we move through the school year, so, you know, in the spirit of no surprises, there'll be no surprises with, you know, what we're doing.
Right.
Yeah, I'm very comfortable with it.
All right. Any other comments on that? We'll finalize that, then, if we make the final tweaking, we'll be ready to move forward.
Okay.
All right. Now, the next item on the agenda is the results of the fiscal '09 budget meeting with town officials. Beverly and I, Paul, and Dr. Martis met with our chairman of the board of selectmen, the town manager, and the finance director. I have summarized that document in a letter, which I provided the public as well. I'll just kind of cover the highlights. For the committee, this year, I wanted to make sure that the president and the vice president of the union were copied as well, because I think that as we begin to go into negotiations, it is important for them to have access to the financial condition of the, of the schools. I think it's important for them to feel there's a sense of trust and a sense of confidence, and that they should be able to see the information that we're seeing. And so, as they're presenting their strategy, we have presenting our strategy, we're all working off the same facts. I'll just highlight a couple of things for the community that's watching at home. The fiscal two thousand nine revenue projection from the town of Foxborough is three point four percent higher than fiscal two thousand and eight, and that includes projecting new growth and taxing at the maximum allowed under proposition two and a half. However, after an initial nine point three percent estimated increase in fixed costs, primarily insurance, preliminary limits, that preliminary limits fiscal two thousand nine operating budgets to only one point seven percent, which doesn't begin to cover the fiscal two thousand and eight salary increases carried into two thousand and nine, never mind the impact of negotiations for fiscal two thousand and nine. In order for us to have a four percent growth, we would need an initial eight hundred thousand dollars in revenue over what the town is projecting at this early in the stage. The town, the school budgets have had many unmet needs impacting the quality of services to the public, and even with a four percent increase in operating budgets, that may not be enough to adequately fund the necessary services, especially on the town side, which is experiencing a strain in both fire and police due to commercial development. Revenue projections this early are very conservative, are conservative, but will be adjusted appropriately as new information becomes available. We've agreed to meet on a monthly basis going forward, so that as information becomes available, we can update it and make sure that not only the committee, but all those that have a vested interest are made aware. A few items for you, and we tried to spell it out in great detail for you, but local receipts are budgeted at three percent above fiscal two thousand and eight, that's a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Historically, though, local receipts have been projected far below actual, as this is how the primary source of free cash is generated. Last year, for example, receipts exceeded estimates by two point eight million dollars. Receipts that exceed projection are needed the following year to help fund operating budgets, as well as capital requests. Foxborough projects state aid to be flat compared to two thousand and eight, fiscal two thousand and eight, which is typical until the governor and the legislature put forth their budgets in the late January, late February timeframe. State aid to Foxborough in fiscal two thousand and eight was eight point five million dollars, and that, and only a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars higher than fiscal two thousand and seven. However, every one percent increase in that state aid will equate to eighty-five thousand dollars, so if we could work with the legislature and get a four percent increase in state aid, that would go nearly halfway to our goal of getting to a four percent budget increase. Commercial development has received a lot of attention in Foxborough, and some people are expecting quite a lot of revenue fairly quickly. However, we were told that only twenty percent of Patriots Place is estimated to be completed in time to impact fiscal two thousand and nine revenue estimates. The town projects new growth at six hundred thousand dollars, which is fifty percent above fiscal two thousand and eight budget amount, and based on what we heard, probably a reasonable estimate for now, but again, that'll be updated on a monthly basis. The town's message to us was that this early in the budget cycle, fiscal two thousand and nine appears to be as tight as the prior years, and even tighter. However, with future updates to revenue projections, we hope we'll be able to achieve closer to four percent funding over fiscal two thousand and eight. Keep in mind, though, that nearly seventy-five percent of that amount for the schools will be needed in the two thousand and nine budget, just to cover the fiscal two thousand and eight two-one-one split for the teachers' contract. This leaves a few dollars to continue the effort started two years ago to address longtime district weaknesses without the use of recurring revenue maintained in our revolving accounts. So, we've tried to spell out for you all the data, all the detail, where the town's expecting its revenue numbers. Share with you that based on the preliminary numbers, it'll be very tight, and that we're gonna work on a monthly basis and update those. As you recall, in prior years, the numbers do change as we get closer and closer to the cycle, and it'll be important for us as a committee to keep on top of those numbers and to advocate for the best numbers. We have a great relationship with the town side, they've been very cooperative, they've agreed to work with us together in a cooperative spirit on a monthly basis. And just like they're struggling, we're struggling, and I think it's important, from our standpoint, to let our unions know where we stand fiscally, and that we have an open set of books for them as well, and that we want an open and honest relationship. There is only so much money, and we're gonna have to work together to make sure that that money is spent in the wisest possible way. So, as I say, attached are the information we got directly from the town. I tried to summarize the meeting, and I tried to be candid. Beverly, did you have anything else you wanted to add relative to the meeting?
Very welcome, accurately welcomed.
All right. Okay. Now, the next item on our agenda is our MCAS presentation by our very experienced and very seasoned, and one day, two day, one day, right? Two days, three days?
It's my third.
Third day.
And very welcome.
Assistant superintendent, so I believe we're gonna have a PowerPoint presentation?
We are. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harrington. I appreciate Dr. Martis saying, "I'm not getting a name tag until after my MCAS presentation," so I guess this is my first performance assessment. So, hopefully, everybody can see the screen, the PowerPoint presentation. You had gotten some information in your packets last week.
Just a quick question, at home, is this being broadcast live through the system, or are they seeing it through the get?
It's on, it's right now live.
So, that's a much better view for people at home, to see it off the screen.
So, you can actually see what we're talking about, which is great. So, your school committee packet was during the afternoon of my first day, so that's how I spent my first day. So, if you're an employee, the Foxborough schools, I got, I managed to get around to a couple of the schools, but not certainly all of them, so I have a few more to go. So, now that we're finished with our MCAS presentation, I hope to get to see everybody within the next couple of days. So, I've got, my glasses on contrary, the most people my age, I can see fine up close, I just can't see distance. So, what I'm gonna present to you tonight is a summary of your MCAS scores over time, so kind of a general overview of where we're going, what's, what's good news, what's the honest bad news, as I call it, but we don't have really bad news here in Foxborough. But I wanna make sure I point out first that while I prepared the MCAS reports prior to my arrival here, Andrea Platt, the KDAE Math Science Director, and Diane Casilli, the KDAE English Language Arts and Social Studies Director, helped me with some of the numbers, because this is what you get when you download the MCAS. This is how big it is. There are over one hundred separate MCAS reports this year for Foxborough, and they have to be downloaded separately, so I wanna thank Wendy Wills for doing that for me. They, it has become quite the monster in terms of data gathering and understanding the information. So, what I would like to do tonight is present to you the, an overview of what we see, and if you have specific questions that aren't presented tonight, we can dig a little bit deeper, because as you can imagine, trying to dissect all those reports, it's more than probably one evening could possibly, in layup, do it justice, because it's a lot of information. So, just to give you an idea, and people at home an idea, in two thousand and seven, MCAS tests in English Language Arts were given to all students in grades three through eight in grade ten. In mathematics, the test was given to all students in grades three through eight in grade ten, and those are both consistent with the federal No Child Left Behind law, which requires that all students be tested in those two core areas each year, grades three through eight, and once in high school. So, that's, this is how Massachusetts complies with the federal No Child Left Behind statute. And in Massachusetts, we also test students in science and technology slash engineering. That means scienti, that means like engineering design, as it relates to science, in grades five, eight, and then again, science is given in either nine or ten, that's up to the district. In Foxborough, we get, some students took the biology test, others took chemistry. So, what you will hear about tonight is the multi-year data comparisons for each subject area tested. We have a few sample MCAS questions for you to understand the complexity of the test.
Do we have to answer them?
Yes. No, I think I'd like to work that a little longer, so no. No, I think I'd like to work that a little longer, so no. Some data on comparison groups, which can also be called cohort groups, which I'll talk about a little bit later. And then for people in the audience, we have the complete PowerPoint slides available in hard copy. So we'll start with mathematics. One of the things that I think I did differently this year than you have had in the past years presented is that I didn't use the typical charts, although I know in your book for the school committee, I gave you copies of the DOE charts for each area for you to look at. Some people are very visual and they like graphs, so these were some graphs. But to be honest, the DOE only gives us up to three years' data at a time. So when you're only looking at three years, those three years are always moving. So it's, I said to Katie today, I spoke to her on the phone, it's sort of like parents only reacting to the most recent paper sent home, you know, the most recent quiz, the most recent whatever. You can react to each homework assignment or classwork that's been sent home, but if you were to look at your child's work from September all the way through to the present, you'd have a much greater idea of how you really, how that child really is doing. So when you look at the DOE reports, they only put three years on at a time, so you can't really see the whole journey. So what I've done for you in math and the other areas, as you can see here, is I've taken every single year that the MCAS has been given in that grade level, and I've imported the charts that I created for the school committee onto the PowerPoint, and then between my thoughts, Mrs. Casilli's thoughts, and Mrs. Platt's thoughts, we added some notes so that we could focus what you would want to look at for this. I use the ovals, and sometimes you'll see a little circle or an arrow to call your attention to some things that we'd like to point out. So if you look at third grade mathematics, it's only been given for two years, so we only have two-year data for this particular test, grade three math. But in, from last year to this year, we did see a significant increase when we lumped the two together, the percentage of students in advanced and proficient together, 70% of our students were in those top two categories as compared to 29% in the bottom two. So we, that was a great improvement over the first year the test was given. And Mrs. Platt had pointed out to me that last year was the first year that anybody saw the test in grades three, five, and seven, so it would have been the first year that teachers in particularly third grade ever saw an MCAS math test. So they had a chance to react to the complexity of it and the demand that kids of grade nine have. There was a dramatic decrease in the number of students who were in the warning category in grade three, and they, Mrs. Platt believes that they made some adjustment to those programs. Also, some benchmark assessments were initiated. Those are local, more formative assessments that we give to see how kids are doing all along the line before you get to the more high-stakes MCAS test. So if the committee has any questions as we go along about the actual data we're looking at, please feel free to ask. If you have general questions, you can hold them to the end, whatever, I'm responsible.
If we, I've always asked, you know, how do we plot children as they go along? So how do we compare what they're doing? So if I'm reading this right, if I look at the students that took it in 2006...
Oh, you're going to grade four?
Who are going...
Oh, you're going to the next, yeah?
Yeah. So then I can tell what that class is doing.
You can't. Now, when I get to cohort groups, which I think you would distribute, I have it all done for you.
Okay, all right.
Because I know people like to look at that.
Yeah, because I really...
That took me most of today.
I'm sure. I just think it would be interesting to plot a grade all the way, the same group, to make sure that they have the same improvement.
Well, you are going to, this is your night, because you are going to see every cohort group in ELA and math by year of graduation.
Wow. Thank you.
And people at home, I know you might want to switch over when dancing with the stars, stars, so let's get to the good stuff before you feel the pressure. So, grade four, mathematics. You can see that our scores are relatively flat. The fourth grade math test has been given for seven, more than, well, about seven years now, it could even have been a little bit more, we didn't have data before 2001. There isn't a lot of change from year to year, so when you're looking at the number of kids in the top two categories, Mrs. Platt does feel that those flatness of the scores supports an even newer math program, but we do have a little bit of conflicting information, because we had some great improvement in grade three from last year to this, we had some great improvement in grade five, we didn't in grade four. So I always say, you know, you don't really know what the numbers are saying to you, what you do know is you know what questions you don't want to ask. So, there were also some quarterly assessments who were given in fourth grade as well, and they had some early morning remediation groups. They're focused on helping some kids with some areas of weakness.
Debbie?
Yes.
They did that last year, prior to those 2007 results.
Correct.
Yes. So again, it makes me stop and pause and think how effective, and again, I guess it's hard to kind of dissect, when you're doing so many different things, and now the introduction of a new math program this year, how do you filter through that? I know that's not really a question we can answer tonight, but I think it's something that is...
Right, but that is the important work.
Right.
The important work is to say, you know, this is going to give us a general impression of how our, how strong our curriculum and our instructional programs are, but to, you can, you will never be able to say, "This is the only thing we did, and so that must be it," because you're always doing a number of things. You're always doing some things that will affect whole groups of kids, the improvement, and you're also doing things that will affect individual children and helping them get a little bit over the bar. So I think that the best improvement is when you think of everything you can do and you do it. So I think that a lot has been done in Foxborough, I think the people who work here really have looked at not only individual children, but the program as a whole, worked really hard to get to some of the progress that you see. So I'll be meeting with lots of people in departments to find out what they think that they did that would impact it. But in any case, it usually isn't one thing, it usually is multiple factor, there usually are multiple factors that contribute to either a rise or a fall. So we'll be digging down a little bit. So if we go on to grade five, mathematics, you can see that there was another, just like in grade three, there was a good percentage increase in students in those top two categories, and a corresponding decrease in the monitor. Let's see, any other points you wanted me to say? There was some, a little bit too much, this is Mrs. Platt's note, "In 2006, we discovered that grade five was still reviewing prior year concepts into November." So all teachers start the school year by reviewing, and it always is a fine line, how long do you review before you really move on to the new concepts? And what we figured out in mathematics is that things tend to spiral back anyway, so you don't have to feel like you're going to have to keep reviewing until mastery, because it's going to be, it's going to come back and be picked up. This is a typical grade five math MCAS test question. So this would be, anyone who wants to volunteer to answer it? It does have the answer right on the screen, so that's helpful. The kids don't have that, by the way. But typically, it will show some information in graphic form, and it will ask the children to do calculations so to be able to understand the graph. So it's based on the graph, what's the number of miles traveled per gallon of gasoline used. So this really assesses a student's ability to be able to look at information presented on a graph or a chart and be able to make sense of it. Here's grade six. You can see we had a dramatic increase in the number of students, a percentage of students in those top two categories, who went from 54% to 77%. That's, you know, a pretty dramatic increase. You'll see when we get to the cohort groups, I look back to see if the 2007 grade six students did well in grade five, and they did. So that's what I'm talking about, multiple factors. You've got a group of kids who, you always have groups who are relatively strong, and then others who are, you're kind of floating along, and so that's probably part of the factor, but clearly, you can't get this dramatic increase without a lot of hard work on the part of students and staff. So there's a dramatic increase, and you notice I put the nice little arrow there on 2007, because it is the best performance in Foxborough's history of grade six MCAS math, which has existed at least seven years, about seven years. So that was pretty good, congratulations to those people. Here's a grade six math question. People at home can see it, but it's basically asking students to look at a visual representation that, that on face value looks like a fraction, and kids will normally look at that and look for a fractional answer, but it actually asks them to convert it to a percent. So it's working with fractions and percents. Grade seven mathematics.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I just make a comment about grade six? And something that you did with all of these, and I just want to commend you for, which I think is wonderful, is, you know, it's underneath each of the data that you've given us.
The notes.
The notes, really, is just so incredibly helpful, because it's really spelling out, you know, what the results are that you're looking at, as well as looking at the things that Foxborough has done. And I just think that it's, you know, you look under grade six, the changes that they made regarding the cycle, the number of periods that they had for math units, the targeted...
I went back to grade six.
Oh, yeah. It's in your, here, right here. Oh, it's on the slide. Sorry. The targeted remediation, you know, the number, the series of problems, I mean, it's quite extensive, how much time they spent on that.
Yes, they made a lot of changes in what they were doing.
Yeah.
So, yeah, right, exactly. They had a, they took some time away from some other areas and gave more math time, they had more math instructional time, they had problems of the week, they had what we call a spiral review, they kept going back and picking up concepts so that they would stay fresh, more remediation during the band course orchestra remediation enrichment period, which is called B-COR, and they had after-school MCAS. So they did a lot of things that obviously had a great positive impact.
But thank you for including that kind of information, because I think it's helpful.
Well, I think at least it puts down what we thought, you know, when I asked them for their comments, and then I looked at it, so it was a compilation of different things that we all noticed in it. It's really hard to look at this much information, and this is about this much compared to what we really have, but it's really hard to look at it and expect everybody to make sense of it in a short period of time.
But this reinforces as well, one of Chris's drivers, and that is to improve communication with parents, because we have to help them understand the role that they play in MCAS. And whether it be, last year, we talked, for instance, about children that we believe needed to be into some extra help, but it was difficult to get them there. And we really need the parents to work with us in that case to help their children. So being able to communicate effectively helps build the case so that the teacher has the support of the parents and the student in order to get it done.
Absolutely, it is, it is a partnership. So it's always good to see that it works, too, because it gives everybody more impetus to continue going forward. So we're in grade seven, catching ourselves up a little bit here. You can see, once again, when you're comparing the percentage of students in the top two categories with the percentage of students in the bottom two, we had a really nice increase in the percentage of students in the advanced and proficient. And Mrs. Platt's note said in 2007, "All students began rotating through a geometry enrichment, which resulted in an increase of between 10 and 12% roughly of time, of increased time in math instruction." And then once again, in the B-COR period, they targeted remediation to specific students. Here are the grade eight math results, the grade eight math test has been given again for seven years or more. There are positive increases in the percent of students in the advanced category. So you notice, when I use the ovals, the colored ovals, to highlight what I wanted you to look at, like, look right here, but...
Thank you.
You're welcome. But you can see, while, while over time, there's not a lot of change when you're comparing the top two categories to the bottom two in grade eight, this looks a little bit more stable than, inconsistent without any of the dramatic increases we saw in some of the other grade levels. However, one of the important things is, are we getting kids to the advanced level? So that you can see, in the top left-hand corner, there, they were able to get 30% of our students in the advanced category in 2007, which is much greater than they ever had in past history. So I think that, that certainly is notable. And you see the percentage of students, while, while comparing the top two categories to the bottom two, there might not be a lot of change, there has been a nice positive growth in the percentage of students getting to the advanced level in grade eight. Overall, I know last year you were concerned about your middle school math scores because of the, with some subgroup that was of concern. I think overall, the middle school and all their hard work really has paid off, they do show really strong improvement in student achievement in math in all of the grades that serve middle school, that have served at the middle school, just five through eight. Here's the high school, grade 10. The results there have been generally stable over the past several years. They have had a nice positive trend going over the last few years in terms of the percentage of students in those top two categories. So over the last, they're slowly increasing those percentage of students and maintaining their good result. I'm going to go on to English Language Arts, and we'll look at the same thing starting in third grade and go right on. Grade three, English Language Arts, this is the part I call, you know, to call it the honest bad news sometimes, it's not, not too bad a news, but the, this was the first year of a new ELA program, and everybody knows it takes a while for, to see results in a new program. Most of the core ELA programs are relatively similar now, whether it was the one we're using now or the one we used before. But we did see last year fewer students achieving at that above proficient performance level, which in grade three, that's what it's called, rather than being called advanced, it's called above proficient, the children are young. You can see that in the first early years of this grade three test, that they never, they didn't even report the above proficient category, they only reported proficient. So you see zeros, not because there wasn't anybody in it, but it wasn't even reported. So that's why I made a note that that category was included in the first time in 2006. Prior to that, they were all reported as one category called proficient. And it used to also be called grade three reading, it's now called English Language Arts, like the other grades. I think the issue here is that Foxborough had some strong results in grade three English Language Arts in the early years of this MCAS test. It has been declining a little bit in the last couple of years. So we have some questions to ask and some work to do in that. And you can see, you know, the opposite is true, also is true, needs improvement in morning, we've had greater kids in the bottom two categories combined. So we have to really take a look at what's been happening in English Language Arts and what help we can give, and get back to what we know we can do, because clearly, we have results that show that we can do really well at that level. And I think that all we have to do is get back to that.
See, this really ties back to our district improvement plans and our school improvement plans, where we were talking about specific criteria, how to move each year. So what'll be refreshing is after you've had a little bit of time to study these results, talk to the staff, come back to us, and we'll, as we look at the district improvement, the school improvement plans, and tell us kind of what's working, what isn't working, what we need to do differently, and how to keep moving it forward. So this will tie into that very nicely.
Right.
Debbie, just one other comment, and I know you already went past the screen, but when you were talking about the mathematics in grade eight, and how we've increased in proficiency in the advanced.
Yes.
What's interesting to note, though, is that in the needs improvement and the warning, they've stayed relatively the same.
Yes.
There's been no movement.
No, in grade eight math.
So again...
That's work to do.
Yeah, exactly.
What we're really looking for, the outliers, we want to move the outliers in that direction.
Right.
So focusing, it's helpful to focus on specifically the areas we need to improve.
Yes.
It's great to acknowledge what we're doing well, and we've done that, but I like the fact that you're really acknowledging where we need to put our emphasis in order to drive the results you need to bother.
There's that old saying, "It is what it is."
Right.
But I mean, it's not like we don't know what to do with English Language Arts, we've proven that we do. I think, and it's not, and it's not the program either, I think that, I think that you, it's, sometimes it's how you use it, sometimes it's what's happened during the change process. So, you know, I, I'm not worried about it at all, I just think that it focuses some good discussion, and teachers here are very well-prepared, and I think that it just, that that'll show us what we have to do, the work that we have to do. Grade four actually looks pretty similar to grade three, that since 2003, you've had a little bit of a decline in English Language Arts at the elementary level. Looks, you know, fairly similar to what we just recorded at grade three.
And of course, the new ELA program was put in to address some of the weaknesses that we saw in the, in the old criteria, the old curriculum.
Right.
And hopefully, over a couple of years, we'll start to see the return on that investment.
Okay, so here's a typical question. This is a multiple choice question for grade four English Language Arts. There's, there's a sentence from paragraph three, it was a longer text, which you can't put all up on the screen, but there was, there's always a long text to read from in English Language Arts, and they, they have a particular excerpt from one of the paragraphs, and they're asking really a comprehension question. It says, "Dirt is the home for countless living organisms, just a handful, just a handful contains more living things than all the men, women, and children on the face of the earth." And the question is, the author most likely compares the number of organisms in a handful of dirt to the number of people on the earth to show that, and it gives you four choices of what the author's intention was. I think this was a good one, Mrs. Casilli picked this out, I think this is a good one to show, because a lot of people think that the reading comprehension portion means you can go back and find the answers in the text, but the majority of the questions are not that tight. There are some of that, we call those recall questions or no-direct questions, those are the easy ones to answer. The harder ones are when you have to, when it's not directly stated, you have to either, either infer what the author intended, draw a conclusion, it's a higher-order thinking skill, it's an inferential thinking question. And it's harder when you're younger to do that kind of thinking developmentally, but most of the questions are of that type, rather than the direct recall, that you can just go back to the text and find the answer.
Would you call, would you classify that as critical reading skills, or is that something different?
Yes, no, we typically use that more when you get to the upper grade levels.
Okay.
And when you're talking to younger children, I mean, I know we're talking with adults or adults, we typically try to teach children just to divide a question into a couple of different categories, and depend... different categories. And depending on how you approach it, it could be just two categories, meaning, you know, it's a right there, when you're really looking for a right there answer, which means I can find it right there versus the thinking question. When you get older, maybe we divide it into four categories sometimes. And then when they, by the time they get beyond, they're almost never asked the direct recall questions, just a few here and there to see about it. But that is where you, in high school, it would be called critical reading.
That was one of the things that was identified in April when the ELA review committee came for the school committee. They were reviewing seventh through 12th and they identified that was an area for seventh and 12th graders-
Yeah.
-that was lacking, the critical reading skills. So that's reminded me of-
It's that, when you actually look at any type of inferential question, there's probably about eight or nine different kinds of them. So it can be- Did I skip one? I did. Oops, hit the thing to her. So now we're moving on to the middle school MCAS test. This is grade five, English Language Arts. It's only been given for two years. This also was the first year of the new ELA program. The results are fairly consistent with last year, which is the first time it was given. We didn't see much of a bump, just about the same, holding their own. In grade six, now remember in mathematics, we looked at strong math scores in grade six and I mentioned that when you look back at those students in grade five, they had pretty decent skills. You'll see the same thing, these are the same kids, grade six ELA. They had a really great improvement in the percentage of students in the top two categories and a great decrease in morning. They had no kids in morning at all. So I think this is what you were talking about before. Can you pinpoint exactly one thing? Almost never. But can you say, well gee, it looks like we had a strong group of children. It looks like we had some instructional changes that went on. It looks like we had more time in math. It looks like we did some remediation in B-COR we hadn't done before, looking at individual needs. As Mr. Harrington said, looking at kids on, I call them on the cusp, you know, the kids who are just on the edge of needs improvement or just on the edge of proficient or just on the edge of advanced that with one or two more questions, they could have gotten it right. All of those kids deserve attention to get them to the next level. So I think you can never really say one thing, but you can look in, through your analysis of the root causes, come up with some things you think really did work. So here's a question for grade six, English Language Arts, and it's an open response question. So there was a long piece of text that the kids read called Invisible Inks and it was a nonfiction text selection. So they were reading a factual kind of article. And it said, "The instructions in Invisible Inks might be easier to follow if the selection had headings for different sections." So this is what the students had to do. It was a multiple part question. Break the selection into three sections using the paragraph numbers, identify where each section will begin, and then B, write an appropriate heading for each of the three sections to identify a part A and explain why that heading is appropriate. And you have to support, you answer with important details from the selection. This is really a main idea question. Do you understand the main idea of each section of the nonfiction? And can you say why? When you give anything a title, it's really identifying the main idea. And can you say why what you came up with makes sense? So you not only have to come up with solid titles, you have to justify it. And that last piece where it says, "Support your answer with important details from the selection," is probably the most critical skill for English Language Arts on the MCAS test, that if you can't go back, we always teach kids to go back and pull out information from the text to justify your reasoning. If you don't do that, you won't get a good score in open response. If you do do that a lot, you'll probably get a good one. Here's grade seven, fairly consistent results over time for grade seven ELA. We did have fewer students performing the advanced category in 2007. When you look back at these same kids when they were in grade six, you saw kind of the same pattern. But fairly consistent results, 81 percent of the kids in the top two categories, which is pretty good. Very good. Here's grade eight. They had 87 percent of their students in the top two categories. The results again were consistent with last year when they had 86. And that was the first year the test was given again in grade eight since maybe 1999. They gave it in grade eight for the first year or two and then moved it to seven and now we have it in every grade, so it's back. Here's a grade eight ELA test item. It's a multiple choice. There was a longer text in paragraph seven. They took out an excerpt that said, "Perhaps it should come as no surprise that a vibrant lexicon has emerged." Clearly, this is a vocabulary question. And the question is, "Which of the following phrases is closest in meaning to the phrase vibrant lexicon?" So the kids had to use context clues to figure out what that phrase meant, which is lively vocabulary.
A 3 percent characterized as odd pronunciation.
Yes.
Which could be true.
And you know, I would try to justify that.
That could be true for the-
Oh, so cute. I can see why a couple of kids might have picked that though.
Beautiful.
Probably chuckling to themselves as they did. Grade 10, English Language Arts was interesting. While we have strong results, I mean, in 2006, 90 percent of the kids were in the top two categories. This year was 80 percent. The curious thing is about it is in the last few years, they've been pretty strong since '03 and, but they fluctuate. So they kind of go up, then they kind of go down, then they go up. So there's no consistent pattern of, you know, consistent improvement or a little decline or above. So we'll be talking, the high school department, what they think Overall, the ELA results for grade six are more positive than for grades three through five. So we'll be looking to see what some of the things that they did in terms of their curriculum. I just want to, I know parents are watching at home, so I want to be sure I'm careful about this because I say a lot. The programs that we bought that are new, whether it's math or whether it's the new core literacy program, the program is not their curriculum. They have a written curriculum that's matched to the state frameworks. Any new program that we may or may not purchase or that other districts will, to the extent that it meets our needs and meeting the written curriculum and the intent of the state frameworks can be great or can be not so great. So I think one of the things we have to look at is we may have bought a new program, but we still have a written curriculum to follow that we know matches the frameworks that hasn't changed too dramatically over the years. So sometimes it can be that the curriculum is fine and it, you know, it gets kids to high standards and everybody has their eye on the high standards, but the, how we're implementing the program that's supposed to meet the curriculum can sometimes meet the mark. So it could be in the implementation, not in the choice and certainly not in the curriculum.
Debbie, you weren't here, but again, at a meeting that the ELA review team presented in April, they talked about rewriting the curriculum for grades seven through 12 over the summer. Do we know if that has been done?
They did do some curriculum work and it is on my, on the side table in my office, but being day three and having your MCAS report due, I can't say. I can tell you everything that's in the file.
Okay.
One of the things that they have, that we always look at is sometimes curriculum is revised to fold in a new set of materials we purchased. Sometimes it's revised because the frameworks have changed, although the ELA has not changed in the last-
They said they were revising it because it was in advanced and that they wanted to separate it into specific grades.
And to be more specific.
Exactly. So that's-
I just would like to point something out and feed the thought to this committee, any committee in the future. When I look back at the, what our scores were back in 2001 through 2007, having sat on this committee as long as I have, I would like people to know that it's very obvious that when our scores were high, Debbie Spinelli was in fact, ELA overseer, okay? And I know, I think what people need to understand when we talk about budgets and what we put in place and what we don't put in place, correct me if I'm wrong, Deb, about the year that you left because of budget restraints, the committee, and I sat on the committee at that time, did not replace you. And we went probably the whole year without an ELA. And then when we did replace the person, and Deb, I could be wrong, Deb or Kate, not sure when you, if it's happened to me, who came when, I think what we did was we implemented a part-time ELA and the person also taught. And I think, looking at these marks, I think any school committee or future committee member should keep in mind that when someone leaves a position, you never leave it open. And that I think this reflects what happened and what transitioned once you had left this system. And I think what you did when you were there and what everyone will help us to do at this point is a great testament to you and what you've done with MCAS for the school system. And I think it should be, we know.
Well, it's two things, Martha. It's one, it's having the will to fill the position. Two, it's having the reputation that will attract the quality people like we have to my left. And we have to work hard at creating a reputation that welcomes people like this to come and to participate.
And in looking at this, Larry, this to me is very disheartening to see where those numbers went and that we never, as a committee, make that mistake that the position was ultimately, that it should be filled.
Well, if you recall-
You can't coast.
I think we had a couple of different people. I mean, I-
But I know the position was not filled quite sometimes.
Yeah.
But one of the criticisms, the criticism in the ELA was that the town of Foxborough and the administration and the school committee were not correlating the results back to the budget. And they weren't looking at what was driving the results and how that might drive the budget. And now if you look at the new district improvement plans and school improvement plans, there's a real correlation to this. And then we tie that back to the budget and we're addressing the concerns that they've had. We've tried to do that, but we have to do better at that.
But when you look at the way this is spelled out, it's-
It's very clear.
It's very clear.
I think you make a great point because we did have time lapse. After Debbie had left, there were other people after her. There was a lapse in time. And I can remember in 2003, at the end, after having cut a million dollars out of budget, everyone said we'd be crazy to even try to have an assistant superintendent position. And we were so hamstrung by the finances and having such a severe cut. But if you remember, at the end of that year, we got, this group did finally approve the position and it still took us six months to hire.
You can never, you can never get back what you lost during that period of time. And this absolutely reflects that. And I just want, I want people to understand that when we make our budgets, we always have to keep the students in mind. And this is a direct reflection of what has happened.
Well, I appreciate your kind words, but I wasn't going to say that because I wasn't teaching the children. I worked here. So I want to make sure. I mean, you know, the teachers you have here are wonderful and they're very well prepared. And I would say another thing that I think might have done is, no matter how good you are as teachers and well-trained, which I know they are, when you have multiple people rolling in and out of that job, which you did, they get inconsistent messages. One person kind of wants to do this, the next person wants to do that, and then you don't know where you are. And everybody knows that you can, you end up spinning your wheels and it does have an effect. So I would say maybe mixed messages was more-
You had it consistent later.
Probably didn't help, let's put it that way. But I wasn't teaching the kids, so I have great faith we're going to get back because I know these people and they're wonderful. Science and technology slash engineering. Just want to make sure I said this before, but technol, science and technology doesn't mean how to use a computer. It means science, which everybody knows. Technology engineering is engineering design, how to design gadgets that will do something. That wasn't really very scientific, but it was funny. How to design things.
Kind of from the Language Arts mode.
Yes, exactly, yes. But it's about, let's see, what do they do for that? They do bridges.
That's like vibrant lexicon.
Yeah, they do bridge design. They do, exactly. Might be a robotic thing. There's, some of it looks like the old home economics, believe it or not, how to design things that will do something. But we don't have that. Okay, grade five. This test is given in five, eight, and then again in high school. So in grade five, this was interesting. You notice this is the first one you've seen where I have a circle and an hour going in both directions. That means that you started off strong in 2003, had a little bit of a decline for the next two years, and now you're going back up again. So can't say I have any insight into that, but you have improved the percentage of students in advanced and proficient combined in subsequent decrease. So over time, they've declined and gone back up. So I'll be really curious to hear what people might-
That ties into Martha's point. If you look at grades three all the way through, which you may find is certain grades are stronger than other grades. And so looking at it that way would be very meaningful as well.
But that wasn't, I'll go back to it. That's unusual though. Usually when it's the, when it's a fluctuation because of the strength, economic strength of a group, which will differ from you, you tend to see this kind of thing, you know, a little bit. And if you always see fluctuation, that means your program is having, usually it means your program's not having any effect at all. It's all student differences. So you really, you almost don't see a decline and then a rise. So I thought that was interesting, being the data nerd that I am and admit to. Grade eight. This was a wonderful, dramatic improvement in the percentage of students from last year to this. The score in those top two categories went from 35 percent in the top two to 50 percent, which is fabulous. You notice that it's not necessarily kids that got into the advanced category more. It's really a decrease in, the kids who were needs improvement and warning were able to bump up into proficient.
For the highest in five years.
Yes. By, yes, by a great margin. So that's wonderful. So congratulations, grade eight people. I'll read some of the notes. Mrs. Platt's notes is the second bullet. Grade eight created several weeks of hands-on MCAS review activities to activate knowledge from prior years. I can't tell you how important that is because in science and social studies, ELA and math tend to spiral naturally. They're always going back and picking up old skills or concepts and bringing them into the new. So in ELA, there's a nat, in math, there's a natural spiral. In science and social studies, tends not to be that way because your units have a beginning and an end that are sort of finite. And so to remember something from, say, ancient civilizations, two years later, really hard. It'd be like us when we were in college saying, well, you took geology two years ago. Can't you remember that for a test now? Not really. And this tends to happen in science as well, where the units are more discreet and distinct. And so to remember all those in-depth concepts and skills to much later is really a challenge. So you really have to do this sort of intrinsic review. You have to be very, very deliberate about it to create review activities for kids, whether it's keeping journal notes from units, the main concepts, the main vocabulary and review it. They also, in 2006, relined some content that they found was dupocative with grade nine. So this left more time for the review. So they left off things they knew they didn't need to do, which is great, and spent more time reviewing for the MCAS prior concepts. All the seventh graders had to participate in a Bridges enrichment class, which is the technology engineering design. And this was the first class to take the science MCAS, having taken that enrichment class. Good for them. Onto high school, which is the last chart. This is the first year of reported results for high school science. So they have given it as a test before, but not with reported results, sort of a trial kind of basis or preliminary results with individual kids' results, but no analysis of where the kids fell in terms of the performance categories. So there are 56 percent of our kids, the great majority of our kids took biology, 224 of them took biology, and 55 students took chemistry. So you will typically, this is typical of what you see in high school, is that the kids who took chemistry, the kids who took bio a little bit early and they're taking chem. So not all kids take chem. So you typically see better results with chemistry because you've got students who are more academically oriented to science. In general, over time, there are more kids in the advanced category for science in grades five and nine, 10, as compared to grade eight. So we've got to look at our seventh and eighth grade science program and see if we can get more of those kids into advanced. So in general, what we need to do, and we've talked about that tonight, we've got to ask the right questions. We've got to dig down. We call it root cause analysis. What do we think might have done it? And then do a little analysis to see, do we think that had impact? Why or why not? Build what we currently have in place, which is solid and what we know to be effective practices. And that will be our foundation. This is something I put in more for the public at home. A lot of people do not realize that the original purpose of the MCAS test, when the Massachusetts Department of Education designed it, was to really assess the strength of a district's curriculum instruction. It wasn't to test individual students. It was to see how vigorous of a program you were providing for students in your curriculum instruction. And that is why we look at the same grade, you know, grade four in every single year. And a lot of people are frustrated by looking at the same grade year to year because it's different groups of kids all the time and people don't understand what to make of it. But that was the original intent of MCAS. It's a good purpose for administering a state exam, but because that isn't the only thing we should be looking at, we can also look at cohort groups, which Mrs. Lattery mentioned earlier in the evening. And I did a cohort analysis by year of graduation, so that's what we're going to look at next. And I did a cohort analysis by year of graduation, so that's what we're going to look at next. So you can call them comparison groups, you can call them cohort groups. What we're going to talk about now is the same group of students and how they fared in their MCAS careers. In the packet that you have here in hard copy and that the school committee has, I have the cohorts, every single cohort, by year of graduation, starting in 2006, all the way through those that are going to graduate in 2014. So there, right now, there are nine cohorts that I'm tracking. But I only put three math and three ELA up on the PowerPoint just to illustrate what you can get. You can't get as much from it, but you can see what we can make out of it. So when it comes to the math cohorts, I'm going to show you math cohorts. One and two and four on the screen. We can see one and two right now. And what you see in the cohorts is very typical for grade 10. You typically see a real good spike in grade 10, whether it's ELA or math, because the kids know, now it counts for graduation. This is a high states test. So they tend to really put their all into it. Not that they didn't before, but not all kids do. You typically, you will see, as you can see in grade eight, math cohort one. Look, just look at the warning category. This is the challenge of middle school instruction, is that you will see more kids being challenged by mathematics in the middle school. You will probably see this in almost every middle school in Massachusetts, and we're no different. So kids do a little bit better when they're in elementary school math. The middle school math becomes a little more challenging. You see some kids start to fall down a little bit, and then they pick themselves back up in high school. You can see that again in cohort two. When they took the tests in grade six and eight, you saw more kids in the warning category, and then they're back to only 9%. I want to also make sure that I mentioned that these percentages include all students who are reported. Now, what that means is there are certain students that took the written MCAS tests that you're all thinking about. So everybody took the traditional MCAS written tests that you're thinking are included. But it also includes students who took the alternate assessment, who are typically special education, students with special needs who have an educational plan, and they took the alternate assessment. So I don't know why the Department of Ed is constructed this way, but those students, while their portfolios show great improvement, they typically don't pass. So they all count in the warning category. So if we would, if the, we can actually separate it out in the big book. You can separate it out. And you can see how many students took the written tests that were in warning. But you see discrepancies. I'm just going to make something up for now. But the five kids in cohort one that were in warning in grade 10, you might have only 3%, actually took the written test, and 2% represent a few kids who took the alt-assessment, the alternative assessment. So it's hard to tell. When you're thinking of 5%, you might think that's a lot, but it actually includes all of the kids what counted in the formal results. Okay, cohort three for math. You see the same thing. You see a definite spike in high school, and you see kids struggling with math in the middle school. So our challenge for middle school educators everywhere is to try to get, try to have a more smooth academic record of achievement for math as you go up. And try not to dip middle school, it does become challenging for mathematics. I pulled out three of the ELA cohorts, just to see on the screen. The committee and the people here in person have the same nine cohorts that I'm tracking for ELA. Same thing again. You see the spike in high school. These poor kids who took, ELA cohort two, who took the grade four test in 98 or 99, this one's 99, cohort one was 98. No one in the state, I don't think, was in advanced those pretty years because they made the grade four ELA test. The readability was so difficult, nobody got into advanced. So that's not reflective of our students at all. But you see for ELA is a little bit different. Typically, when you look at all the cohorts for ELA, you will see relatively stable percentages in warning. ELA tends to be stable when it comes to how kids do over time. Whereas math, you typically will see that little bit of a dip in the middle school era. So you can see these kids are relatively stable over time as a cohort. Cohort five, exactly the same. This is a very stable group. So they're almost identical in terms of how many in advanced and how many in warning when you look at the high and the low. So I know you're all going to go home and study all nine cohorts. Some of you might have chosen one of those cohorts, so we'll see how they're doing. So tonight, I thank you for listening to me very long when it comes to the MCAS presentation. But this is really just the bird's eye view. And I don't, I don't want to mislead anybody. The really important work goes on from now on. Now that we have this overview, it's really what happens in the schools for a more finer analysis of the curriculum and instruction by grade level, by school, to look at our strengths, look at any areas we can make changes, to make recommendations for improvement, to look at our subgroup populations, which are, you know, are reported in our adequate yearly progress, as with no child behind. And that's where the real work goes on. So this, hopefully, this gave the community and the committee an idea of where we've been and where we're going and where we hope to be.
Excellent.
Gee, Debbie, you've reached your three days, and this is all you've done.
And so if anybody from a school says, "I haven't seen her yet," you'll say, "She's been very busy."
Well, I have a motion. I would like to motion, make motion that-
Give her a name plate?
Mrs. Finelli against her name plate. Do I have a separate?
Oh, that's a move. Very much. Barry, you went, "Oh, woo!" Get it right now.
You aren't kidding. She might have got it.
I didn't really even think it was here. That was really funny. All you people are just crazy. Gee, thank you. I feel quite honored.
Welcome home.
Thank you very much.
Sexy humor is important.
It certainly is. Gee, thank you, Wendy. Where were you hiding now?
Hot off the press. Debbie, I have one question.
Yes.
When did they start? Our data goes to 2001, but there were some, like in grade four, that was 1999. I know it took them forever to-
1998 was the very first year.
Ninety-eight.
But in those years-
But 98 didn't count, right?
No, it counted.
It counted. Ninety-eight was only four, eight, and 10, if I recall.
The first several years was four, eight, and 10. And then they decided it was too much for fourth grade. So then they moved a few of them to fifth for a while. They moved the eighth to the seventh in ELA, but they left the math and science in eighth. They started, Massachusetts started playing around with putting a few in four, a few in five. They had none in six, a few in seven, a few in eight, and a couple in 10.
So it makes sense to start from 2000 for tracking purposes, for analyzing the data?
It depends what you're looking at. Depends which area. Because they, this, the charts here show you, if it was ever given, it's there.
Okay, so you've got all that.
But, you know, you can't look at the same thing. Now, now we'll be able to look at the same thing because this is our second year of everybody being tested in ELA and math, grades three through eight, and then again in high school. So now we're going to see it every year, if, whether you think it's overtesting or not. Is it a debate for the national forum? But that is-
I've learned so much. Thank you for clarifying all that.
Any other comments from committee members?
Excellent. This is the most I've ever understood about all of it. And to have, I mean, to have you give the background of why it's 001, that the tests were written at such a difficult reading level, nobody could pass them.
I actually did a readability that year. I was working here that year. And I had a couple of programs that do readability. And the average readability was somewhere in high eighth to low ninth grade level of the fourth grade-
Fourth grade test.
Tests.
Took a while, but you'll find.
The second year was a little better, but they really didn't do a good job in fourth grade. Whereas when they started the third grade test, the minute we saw the first third grade test, everybody said, "Okay, this is fair." But fourth grade, they had a few rocks.
Okay, Chris, do you want to talk about the math, mass junior classes?
Just briefly, that school committee members will be attending, I think, at different times. I think some will be attending all three. We start on, when, next week from Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And I think there's actually a session on Saturday for school committee members. So it's a, I'm obviously biased about this since I've planned, helped to plan it over the years. But it's a very well-attended conference. It is high-quality speakers, very good breakout sessions, opportunities for school committee members to network across communities, certainly not to the superintendents to network with each other about different issues that are coming up. So it's a wide variety of topics overall, just to something that we've been talking about since the beginning in late this spring and in the summer. It's the topics around, the general topics around global education. And which I think is a real key. Alan November will keynote the first day. He's a noted speaker about job skills and thinking skills and work skills. And then Kenneth Kay will follow up on that with a similar type of keynote on Friday. And then again, I think the breakout sessions around legal issues and some other important areas, I think, will be good. And let's not forget the Friday lunch, where we're honoring one of our members with a distinguished service award. So I think, I think it should be a very, very good conference. So I just wanted to raise that. And I know Bev is a delegate to the NSC resolution, which will be held on Wednesday afternoon.
Okay, if we move on to other matters, I want to start with Chris.
Yeah, I just had two quick ones. So a couple that I had mentioned to the committee, just an overall in email. We did launch, along with Chief O'Leary, Connect Ed and Connect CTY Communication Systems. Heard very, very good feedback from the community, from the staff. We successfully completed 93% of our calls. We have some numbers that we're assessing now. We've, we could break them out. I can, we'll talk about digging into MCAS data. I can really dig into this data, find exactly who didn't, who couldn't connect with for one reason or another. So we're working on that now, and then we're going to, we're going to open it up and expand the number of opportunities for people to have communication with us via cellphone, email, those kinds of things. So I think that, I think the launch was a success. I talked to Chief O'Leary, and he felt the same way. So I think it's a, at least initially, very good investment by the school committee. Gives us some real variety in terms of announcing things. The principals will be, we're going to take this to the next level for the school level. The principals will be trained next Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So the Connect Ed people will be coming to Foxborough, and we'll be going over an overview on how principals can do this, reach this as well. The second one is actually one that I didn't, that I haven't shared. We've been hearing just briefly in an email from SBA. They're expecting to come out and look at this school in a few weeks. I received an email. I was waiting for a hard copy. When I receive the hard copy, I'll share it with the committee. No specific date, but we are on their calendar now. So they'll be looking at Foxborough High School. What they're doing is they're going to all of the communities and visiting every school that submitted a proposal. And I'm thinking that within a month or two, we should be hearing more. But I'll, as we communicate, we haven't had any communication with them since we submitted our proposal in July. It's the first communication that we've heard. So we'll be having an update on that soon.
Excellent.
At least they've contacted us, so we were waiting. I was, I was actually, I actually was in an event a few weeks ago and was talking to the executive director, Catherine Craven, who I know a little bit. And I was asking her when we were going to hear. Obviously, she didn't have the data in front of her. And so it was nice to hear today. And we'll be, we'll be getting involved, more involved in that next.
I had two items, Chris. First of all, the EQA, what's the status of our letter from them?
Yeah, I'm waiting for, I called Joe Rapp, I'm waiting for a response. And I, hopefully, at our next meeting, we'll have some.
Okay. And the second item I had is I want to acknowledge the work that Katie did on school committee goals and objectives. A copy was in your package for each committee member. Would ask that before the next meeting, you mark it up and get it back to Katie so that she can present a revised format. But she has done an absolutely outstanding job, I think. And I hope that in the next week or so, you'll go through and you'll make whatever comments you have for her, so that at our next meeting, we can approve the school committee goals. So that we'll have goals for the school committee, goals for the superintendent. We'll have job description for the superintendent. We'll have an evaluation instrument. So we'll hit a lot of progress in that area. Katie, any other business for you?
Just one question. Talking about the ELA, this being the second year. Is there a review committee established right now that is reviewing the? I know you're just talking about a couple things, but, I mean, I know this is the second year. And so I guess what I'm wondering is, I know by the end of the year, we'll be getting feedback regarding the ELA program. Of course, I'm thinking about this as we're reviewing the MCAS data today. But what I'm wondering is, are they meeting throughout the year? I'm not clear about that.
I'm not sure. But I will have a meeting this week with both Diane and Andrea individually. It's just, you know, preparing all this. You don't have a lot of time to start meeting people.
Oh, yeah, no, I didn't expect you to know.
But I think that most informally, I can tell you that most people's question is, questions revolve around how, I mean, regardless of any program, people know what good literacy instruction looks like. We call it balanced literacy. Make sure you hit all the aspects, all the components of literacy. People know what that is. The question is, when you start a new program, how do you use it in a way that keeps you true to what you know to be good practice while incorporating a new set of resources? So I want to make sure that there's no magic program out there where everybody's using the same thing. Not a magic program in math, and none in ELA, and none in anything. So the question is, when you get a new program, it's a, it's a set of resources. It's not the curriculum, and it's not necessarily everything you rely on. So I say often, 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 the program is not your curriculum. So I think most of the questions that I've heard informally revolve around, how are we going to use it? And how are we going to stay with what we know is best practice with a new set of resources? And you can't, you just can't put all your faith in a program like an assembly line. You can't put kids on an assembly line and do magic stuff, and then they all pop out proficient. That doesn't happen in any, in any area, whether it's ELA or math or science. So most of the informal questions I've had is about how, they were asked to use it last year, and how are they going to be using it in the future? That's really where the magic is. It's the teachers as instructional decision-makers. Because if you're just going to hand people a program and say, "Just start on page one, continue," then you really don't meet thinkers. But teachers are thinkers, and they're the ones that know the kids, and they're the ones that can balance all that and juggle it.
I just wanted to make sure that that dialogue is going on. It's going on throughout the year. And I'm assuming at some point, we'll get feedback about that. But that's, it's a big priority for us, I think.
It is.
We looked at the data today and talked about that.
Anything else, Katie?
No.
Katie would like to go next.
Sure. Just want to thank the committee on the half of the partnership for Drug Free Foxborough for your support in paying for Marilyn Belmonte and the ad with the Foxborough Reporter. The parent workshop is scheduled November 14th at 7:00 at the Foxborough High School auditorium. And I'd like to thank Dr. Martis, who has done a great job with our communication plan. Administrators met, several already have it in their newsletter. Dr. Martis is going to put it into a Connect Ed call.
Connect Ed call coming up.
And our secret backup at the high school is getting flyers through all of the coaches. We're hoping to shoot for the same number who came for the MIAA regulation. So there's that update. And I'd just like to take a moment and really thank, again, our administrators and our nurses. Linda Millie at the Borough School did a wonderful article on the new staff resistant infection, the MRSA. And it was picked up by the Foxborough Reporter. And I happened to notice that in several of our elementary schools, information is in the newsletter. But the best news is, as a parent, those gym uniforms and the sports uniforms, instead of staying in a locker wet for a week, they're now coming home within 48 hours. So I know, you know, my hat off to our nursing staff, our administrators, our coaches, because they're keeping very vigilant. And I want to thank them for the way in which they also not just communicated with students to make something happen, but their efforts to communicate to us parents. And it's great, we appreciate it. And that's all I have.
Okay, I think Chris had one other thing.
Yeah, just, yeah, thank you. We have a couple of, reminded me of some publicity that we've had. We have a couple of events coming up for students that have been identified as ill, one for one reason or another. We had one of our third graders at Borough School. There'll be a dinner hosted by the Borough School on Friday night. And then I want to remind people about-
This Friday night?
This Friday, this Friday night. There are two seating, so one at 5:00, I think it was, 6:30.
And you can also donate if you can't come to the dinner. There is a fund established, and we can get the information to that. But make sure people were that.
And the second one, we had one of our middle school students, sixth grader, was diagnosed with leukemia recently. And the community has really come out, and there'll be a walk on the Sunday after Thanksgiving. And that fundraiser is, is, will be well-publicized in the next week or so. It's all, it's been formulated. But it's just been, it's really heart, been heartening to me to see the community come up. And I've had a chance, just as a quick aside, to meet with some of our social servants people in the last couple of weeks. Actually, I at least have now- I had Lisa Down through the discretionary fund coming in tomorrow morning. And we'll be hosting a meeting with guidance counselors and principals and nurses, so that we can make sure those connections are there, so that if we identify families in need in different ways, we can help as a, as a, as a school system, work with those agencies, so that we're not duplicating effort, and, and we're targeting the right resources for the right people. I've been very impressed with, with different people, I've had with Vicky Lowe over at the Senior Center of Human Resource, so I met with Scott Inman from the Angel Fund last week, and we'll, we'll meet with Lisa tomorrow, but there's a lot going on in the community that I want people to know, and then occasionally, when we see something like this, in these two examples, we see others in the community who may not be part of any of these organizations step up, so whatever role we can play, it's really around what Larry mentioned earlier, around communication and getting to know families and getting to know parents, whatever role we can play in terms of helping, and we'll certainly do that. So it's another initiative we have underway, and it gets to know the community, and we'll see what's going on, but I appreciate you, I've forgotten about the two specific fundraising efforts that are underway.
Thank you. Bev?
Yes, Mrs. Philsberry would like people to know that it's going to be a wonderful career day, Thursday morning, at Foxborough High School, and the French exchange, thirteen students and two, three chaperones, returned happily after another wonderful experience of Friday to Paris. And I'd like us all to remember Barbara Hyland. She not only served for several years as a school committee member, but she also was a representative on Capitol Hill at the same house for a couple of years.
Absolutely. Martha?
Chris, I, I think, you know, what, what you said about people coming together in this community, not to bring up the past per se, but I, I think one of the things that I, I know and love about this town is I can remember back when, when my brother was diagnosed with leukemia, and the way this town rallied around my family and my brother, and, you know, it, it brings back a lot of memories when I hear about another child that has developed this, but we've come so far, but I, I just want people to know that this has been, it's one of the reasons I've always stayed in this town. It's a very responsive town, and the outpouring and the respect and, and the caring that this community shares along the way, it's, it's, it's very heartening to know that I continue to live in a community that, that considers other people and what they go through, and it, it meant a lot then, and it means a lot now, to see the people still rally around people. The only other thing is, Wendy had called me today about policies, and she caught me kind of at a bad moment, I was between patients, so if she could just talk about the conversation she had with Jim Addy, I would appreciate it, because I didn't have a pen I could write with at that moment, so if you would, Wendy, please.
I had talked to him about another issue, and he was saying that the policy manual with all the changes, all the suggestions that the committee has made, other than a few outlining ones that we're working on with the administrators, that manual, he has sent to the printer.
Ah.
So he will be sending that back, he couldn't give me a timeframe or anything, but he will be sending that back in the near future, so you'll have something that incorporates all those changes to date, other than those few that are with the administrators. So he is making a good deal of progress, and I wanted you people to know that, that is in the works.
Let's keep the pressure on, so that we can bring this long project to conclusion. I say long, and that it has taken a long time, but it's still a lot faster than other communities would have done it, and when you consider it hadn't been done in twenty years. But it is important to bring it to fruition as soon as we can. Martha, do you have anything else?
I did want, just to mention, if people have a chance to look at last week's, or a week ago, I guess, the reporter, a week ago Friday, the little, there was a little fellow young student in the third grade, Ryan, and it was just by chance, the day before, that Coach Martinelli discovered that he has a debilitating illness, and went to his football team and said, you know, he's a young person right here in our system who will never be able to have what you have and enjoy, would you like to make him an honorary captain for the homecoming game? So he was at the football rally, he was presented with an autographed football from all the players, and then he was helped with the coin, coin toss at the beginning of the game. So we do have a wonderful community.
You know, even the Patriots over the years have, you know, supported us in a, in a long way, and not to belabor, you know, family history, but, you know, unfortunately, when my twin sister's son was diagnosed with Hodgkin's, and he was going in for surgery-
And this is as an early high school student, right?
Yeah, yeah, well, he was thirteen years old, and the Patriots got wind of what was going on, and he was a huge fan of the Patriots. Steve Grogan came to my house the night before my nephew was going to be operated on, and him and his son sat and spoke with my, my nephew, and tried to encourage him, and the Patriots, you know, during the following season, really supported my nephew, and he went to practices and stuff, so, you know, everybody contributes within this community, and, you know, the Patriots included, they do a lot of things in a lot of quiet ways, but we, we do rally around our own this community, and I, I think, you know, what they did at the pep rally and everything else, it just, it gives everybody such a boost.
Absolutely.
But there was nice coverage by the reporter as well.
I would like to call the board now to go into executive session for the purpose of discussion of collective bargaining strategies, with the intent to not come back into public session at the end of the executive session. Katie?
Aye.
Beverly?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.
And I, myself. This meeting is adjourned.